Table that is outside in order to be heard at this meeting. Your form must be submitted within the first five minutes of the meeting in order to be heard at this board meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the Board President. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion. Thank you.
Well, we actually have 23 public comments. And we usually have five minutes. Obviously, we're going to run out of that time limit. When we get to that time limit, we'll go ahead, entertain a motion to allow everyone that has submitted their forms to speak. We've never denied anybody from speaking, so don't worry, you will all get to speak. And when Mr. Pearlman gets settled, we'll get started.
Pursuant to Section 841411 of Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, August 17th at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Vice President Dr. Holman will also lead us in the OPS Vision and Mission Statement.
First, our vision, every student, every day, prepare for success. And our mission, the Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Thank you. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Cassidy.
Here.
Gadding.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Crackey.
Here.
Pearlman.
Here.
Ryan.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Snipe.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. Moving on to Board and Superintendent Communications, let's start with our Treasurer Support, Good evening.
Good evening. President Snow, members of the Board, Superintendent Logan, the financial statements for the period ended June 30, 2020, have been finalized and submitted for your review.
Thank you. Colleagues, if you have any questions or anything, please don't hesitate to reach out to Dr. Logan and Mr. Roberts. As you know, we're starting the budget process, and that will consume this board over the next month, on top of our other duties. Up next, Dr. Logan.
Good evening, President Snow, members of the Board of Education, those here in attendance and those watching via streaming. We, I would like to begin the updates today with the Remote Learning Program updates. Part of our comprehensive plan for a safe and responsible return to school. The Remote Learning Program application window opened on July 13th and continued through July 22nd. At the conclusion of that window, 6,445 families had requested information about the option. Families then received specific information about the program, resources, and expectations before making a final determination about enrollment. We currently have 4,285 students enrolled in the Remote Learning Program. That number may increase as we complete final applications. At the high school level, counselors are supporting remote learners to ensure students complete the appropriate courses at home. Our special education team is reviewing individualized education programs to identify services that may be available. Families will receive communication this week regarding the Remote Learning Program orientation and other important information for the semester to come, to include how those students will receive their iPads prior to the start of that program, which begins on August 18th. If you, when you came in this evening, you likely noticed a new mural in the foyer of the TAC building that has been completed by muralists Michael Hiron, Richard Harrison, and Rebecca Harrison with their combined 68 years of artistic expertise that have helped to bring this history to life of the last 160 years of the Omaha Public Schools. The mural recounts the past, the present of the Omaha Public Schools, and will also be expanded to capture students' perspectives. Inspired by the work of Larry Rivers, an American whose work influenced contemporary pop art, the mural itself is a patchwork of images with the idea that a timeline is a collage. All the images merged into this artistic display exemplify the rich diversity of the Omaha Public Schools. A corresponding website is in development to provide additional information. We appreciate the philanthropic support that supported these artists in this journey, and our students who also participated. And I would also like to make sure that I thank Angela Fisher, who spearheaded it on behalf of the district, and also Mrs. Monique Farmer, who also worked with that program. Our meal distribution program, summer wrap-up, on Friday, we wrapped up our meal distribution program. We started with four meal distribution sites in March and incrementally increased the number of sites to 40. In addition, we had partnerships with the Food Bank and with the YMCA to provide fresh fruits and vegetables and meals for, to last a family for a week throughout that time. The partnership with the Food Bank will continue through the end of the year. I want the calendar year. I want to extend a special thank you to our OPS Nutrition Services Team. They eagerly stepped up to meet the challenge of providing meals for our families during an unprecedented time. We appreciate their work and support of our families. We are one week away from the reopening of schools. It's been five months since our students have been inside classrooms in person. We miss our students and families, and we've spent the spring and the summer diligently planning and preparing to welcome them back into safe, into a safe school environment. I understand that many speakers tonight will speak about that return and their feelings about that return, which we certainly appreciate and look forward to hearing. Three key principles have guided our planning process: prioritizing the health, safety, and welfare of our students, families, and our teachers and staff; providing support to our students, families, and our teachers and staff, including supporting their social, emotional needs in the midst of this pandemic; and maximizing in-person learning time where possible for students and teachers. Last week, we had a media event where we were able to see, people were able to see the iPad Air device equipped with internet connectivity. In addition to that, we were able to talk about the 20,000 thermometers that we will give out to families who are in need as well. The district also will provide facial coverings for our students. Each will receive five. Staff members will receive five facial coverings to support them during this time. We also, last week, held webinars to support our families on social, emotional learning, managing anxiety and COVID-related concerns, digital citizenship, and other things to help, especially around identifying signs of anxiety and depression. The second session, creating a safe, remote learning environment, addressed ways families can create inviting home learning spaces, encourage healthy media and technology usage, and offer best practices for parents, and become effective at-home learning coaches for the days students will be at home. I'd like to thank our district team for hosting these webinars. They certainly were terrific. Lastly, I would like to, I'm sorry, next to last, I would like to extend congratulations to North High graduate LJ McFaul for earning the North High Teachers Award, the MacMillan Magnet Scholarship, and the Harley Alexander Collins Scholarship. Central High School graduate Caitlin Engel for being awarded the Fullerton PTA Resiliency Scholarship and the Donald and Mildred Othmer Scholarship. North High graduate Mula Esho for receiving the Brian J. Slobodsky Memorial Scholarship. Central High graduate, our Aryan ally, for earning the Frank Grobe Award Scholarship. All of the MacMillan Magnet alums who earn scholarships from the school to support them as begin their college journey. Hannah Miller, Eleanor Dunning, Jenna Arbuckle, LJ McFaul of North High, Alm Cammy of Central and Paradise Sullivan of Benson High. Congratulations to Monarchs. As I conclude my remarks, I want to convey how personal this is for myself and the team we serve, our staff who bring schools to life. We teach, feed, and care for young people. They are all at the top of our minds as we focus on health and safety. Think of a favorite teacher, nutrition services staff member, or custodian who looks out for everyone in your school. I want to introduce you to Mrs. Collins. She's imaginary, but she's someone who can help us all remember our responsibility as we return to in-person school next week. Mrs. Collins, although fictitious, has taught for 22 years in the Omaha Public Schools. She loves teaching. She loves her students. Ms. Collins is moving back to third grade this year after a few years with second graders. Third grade is her favorite. Even after 22 years, Mrs. Collins' classroom is one of the first to be decorated and ready. This year is no different. The classroom theme is climbing a mountain, and math is front and center. At 61-years-young, Mrs. Collins could retire. She thought about it, but loves teaching way too much. She wants to be back for her students. Her second graders are so excited for another year with Mrs. Collins. They're moving to third grade. Kelly is one of those students. Kelly reads 15 books, read 15 books this summer and worked on math. Knowing Mrs. Collins is serious about that. Kelly's family emailed with Mrs., emailed Mrs. Collins this summer. They're worried about Kelly's health issues. She also misses friends from school. Kelly's grandparents gave her three new face coverings with a smiley face emoji on the front, knowing they'll be used when she rides the school bus and in the classroom. When we plan, when we make decisions, we are thinking about Kelly, her bus driver, her cafeteria team, Mrs. Collins, and all of her school leaders, every minute of every day. Board of Education members, these past five months have reminded us more than ever of the most serious obligation we have, to ensure the health, safety, and well-being of our staff and students. I know we all take it seriously and personally. We plan thoughtfully, deliberately, diligently about opening schools responsibly. We also learned the importance of remaining adaptable. Health officials have advised us that we may face cases of virus spread that are different from school, community, and school community. We are prepared to transition temporarily close schools and to transition to online learning when and where we need to. I want to remind our families that we will continue to communicate the most current information using direct emails, our social media, website, text messaging, and phone calls. We've created health and safety webpages on our district website, thanks to our team for making sure that they are multilingual. Parents can also contact their child's school with any questions or concern. We care about our students, staff, and families. Your health, safety, and well-being is our priority. For the sake of Kelly, Mrs. Collins, her cafeteria workers, and all the staff at that school, we ask that our community support us in this effort by wearing facial coverings and adhering to this directed health measures by Douglas County Health. Thank you very much. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Up next, Board members, do you have any comments? Ms. Ryan?
Thank you, President Snow. Over the past few months, we have seen how our country, state, and our city has responded to COVID-19 in an irresponsible way. A global health pandemic has turned into a partisan issue that has been deeply divided along political lines. Our governor has only furthered this, this issue by threatening Dr. Poor with legal actions if she implements a mask mandate. This is an abuse of power. This matter is, in fact, political. School districts and school boards are now at the front lines of having to protect our community where our leaders have failed. Every day, I run through a variety of emotions ranging from anger to grief and complete sorrow. Unfortunately, how our country has developed, parents and guardians must rely on school systems more than ever to not only provide an education, but to provide a society with, where two-income and single-income homes are able to work in order to survive. We have to expand our community health centers to meet the needs of our larger community, not just our students. The system we currently live in does not work for a majority of people in our country. And unfortunately, that means as a district, we must place health above all else. I 100% believe that we must go completely virtual to help slow the spread of COVID in our community, and then look at plans like the 3-2 model. I admire Dr. Logan for taking the extremely brave step in leadership and being the first district in the metro to work on a 3-2 model. I'm reminded of the passion and the strength that our educators have brought in advocating for their students, but also for theirselves. I hear you, and I am with you. Thank you for what you have been doing and will continue to do. And on the more personal note, I ran on the fact that our children are the future of Omaha. We are putting our future at risk. We are not fully valuing the lives of our children if policymakers continue to roadblock responsible pandemic response. The weight of even one student or teacher dies because they contract COVID within our school system will weigh heavy on me for the rest of my life. So I must ask you, how will that weigh on you? And that concludes my remarks, President Snow.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Mrs. Crackey.
The interesting thing that just happened is that she took the words out of my mouth. She said everything that I feel. I want to do remote learning, and I want to even go to starting after Labor Day. Many, many years ago, OPS did that. They worked it out. It came out fine. They scheduled it. They did get out June 7th or 10th or something like that. But whatever it takes, I don't even want one student, one parent, or one teacher to go home with it and give it to somebody else who's ill in the family or something. It's just, I wouldn't, I wouldn't send my child back. So that's, that's very personal to me. I wouldn't want my grandchildren going back either. So, thank you for listening, but that's my, I don't want to be in conflict with anyone, but I just, if I'm not here to say what maybe is helpful to others, there's no other reason for me to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Crackey. Ms. Snipe.
I didn't really have anything to say at first, but listening to Ms. Ryan, and I had a really good conversation with Ms. Crackey the other day, and I guess I would just really agree with that, but I would add to that because, you know, I appreciate everything Dr. Logan is doing, and she's right in a lot of aspects in that, you know, community has to be involved in this. When I look at the community I live in, yeah, I think that remote learning 100% is best. But then, I get worried, because I live in a racially and/or ethnically concentrated area of poverty. So then I start wondering, well, how do I make sure, and not just me, all the assets available, how do we make sure that kids are getting the proper education in this remote learning experience? Because it's not as easy as the kids are going to be at home, they'll have class at home, and that's it. So I, I love entertaining that idea. I just want to also have the conversation of how do we utilize all these absolutely positively wonderful resources that we have in Omaha, Nebraska, to make sure that it's done properly? Because I've talked to principals, I've talked to teachers who, who serve these marginalized communities, and it's tough. It's a tough decision. You're worried about safety, but we've been talking about education, especially as people of color, since before I was born. So it's a tough conversation I want to have, but I want to make sure that the community, not saying they have not stepped up, because they do. And I see it through COVID-19, but intentionally do it in a way that can be supportive of every single type of student that is in OPS.
Thank you, Ms. Snipe. Mr. Pearlman.
Thank you. I just want to make, I guess at this point, I want to make every, I want to take every opportunity I can to directly, at this point, plead to the governor to stop threatening lawsuits, withholding money, and using every ounce of power that he has to do what doctors are telling us not to do. I am one of the handful of board members up here who is going to send his children to school next week. And this has been one of the most terrifying weeks of my life. And when I see politicians make decisions based on what's best in their political interest versus what's best in the interest of every Nebraskan, it makes me sick. You know, I, I heard a comment that, I heard a couple of comments from the governor's press conference yesterday. One was if masks work, go ahead and send your kids back to school. Honestly, that's, that's a little insulting, because our schools aren't on an island, they're not in a vacuum, they're part of a community. And, Mr. Governor, you're the leader of this community, and we need your help. We cannot have threats to withhold money. We can't have threats of lawsuits. It needs to stop. If doctors are giving us a prescription, we need to take that prescription. I know a little bit about something about government overreach. I work to protect it every day as a prosecutor. I ensure that the government does not overreach. Putting a piece of cloth over your face is not a government overreach. It's what's needed to slow the spread of coronavirus. Everyone knows that. It's universal. It's agreed by every medical professional, including the world's best medical professionals here in Omaha. I support a mask ordinance that does not make it a crime. I heard yesterday that you said that there is nothing between asking folks to put on a mask and a crime. Yes, there is. It's called an infraction. It's a civil infraction. It's what a lot of ordinances are. Drug possession, it's, it's an infraction in Nebraska. Violating a fireworks ordinance, it's an infraction. You don't go to jail for that. Traffic laws are an infraction. For most of those, you don't go to jail for that. There is no reason why we shouldn't be doing everything that we can to slow the spread of this virus, so long as it's not a serious legitimate infringement on individual rights. And mandating that people wear masks, and if they don't, they get a small fine, is not an infringement on anyone's rights. It is not government overreach. So as we see the cases increase, it's okay to change your mind. It's okay to listen to the medical professionals and adapt as this virus comes back. A month ago, I may not have felt this way. We were reducing the spread. But as all medical experts have said, opening up too soon without a requirement to wear masks isn't the way it should have been done. And now we are where we are. We need to put everyone in the best position to return to school. And that's all I'm asking. I'm pleading with you, because I'm sending my own children to school next week, and we need your help. Now I'm going to talk on a different, completely different topic, and that's school funding. And that relates to property tax relief, and that's going to be on the floor of the legislature this week, maybe as soon as tomorrow. I would ask that every state senator, because this is up to the state senators at this point, to have a keen eye on the language of whatever comes in front of them, and take note that school funding is always subject to the balance sheet in Nebraska. TOSA is what happens when the budget is done. There's an old saying, fool me once, shame on you, but I would say fool me 20 out of 21 years with TOSA, shame on me. Now, if we don't know what's going on with TOSA, then we don't really have any business being in the legislature. Every year, it's subject to the whims of the budget. I don't know what most people think, but I don't think the budget's going to be too rosy the next couple of years. So as far as the property tax relief, I would ask lawmakers to be very careful, because you don't have to look far back into the history of public schools to see that we've been promised things only to have the rug pulled from underneath us. And I'm talking about the common levy, and I'm talking about TOSA. And so I would urge lawmakers to be very careful when they're promised something, because those promises have never been kept when it comes to school funding in Nebraska. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Pearlman. Mrs. Cassidy.
Okay, well, I'm going to bring it back to COVID, off of the property tax. I echo the thoughts of all of my colleagues that have spoken so far, and like Mr. Pearlman, I have three children that I will also be sending to school next week, and it is terrifying. That is a great word. I just want to take a moment, though, to, I wish that I had, had as eloquent words as Mr. Pearlman and Ms. Snipe and Ms. Ryan, but I don't, and they, they said it best. But I do want to take a moment tonight to, all of us up here have gotten several, several, several emails from a lot of you folks, parents, teachers, just community members, so I want to take a moment to thank all of those that have reached out, because your voices are what we need to hear. Like Mr. Pearlman, I think that we all are maybe not quite where we were, maybe June 29th at that meeting. Things have changed, and things have changed drastically. So... So all of your emails and correspondence, I want to just thank you all. And I want to thank all the teachers out there that have voiced their opinions. Because it means a lot, and it helps all of us to be able to make decisions and to help guide the district staff that is working so diligently and so terribly hard, countless hours, to try to make the best possible decisions for all of our students. We're just, it's, it's just extremely difficult. And I want to commend Dr. Logan and all of the staff for all that they are doing. Because it is not easy. We are up here just hearing plans, approving decisions, trying to decide if what they are coming up with is what is best, but they are the ones coming up with these plans and trying to implement them from every single angle and not miss any piece of the puzzle. And so I want to commend them and just thank everyone for, for all that, all the correspondence that they've been sending. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Cassidy. Dr. Holman? Any other comments from board members? Florence, yours?
Thank you, President Snow. Guess I'll wrap this all up with, with final comment. I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank the community, our parents, our staff, our teachers, everyone, for your patience and your grace with us board members as we try our best to respond to all of the communications that we have gotten over the past couple of months. We certainly understand the passion and the concern that comes behind all of these emails. And I just want to take this time to recognize the thought that goes behind it and the active voices of you all as you share your concerns and your love for your families. Also within that breath, I want to take the opportunity to address something that's kind of been heavy on my heart for the past couple of months as we've been going through COVID together and trying to figure out everything that's going on. And then also just kind of, will just actually take note of some of the communications that we have received that have been rude, downright disrespectful, and blatantly inappropriate, to be honest with you. And it's very saddening, and it's very frustrating. Because I think I can speak on behalf of all my board colleagues that we care for all of our kids, we care for all of our families, and we are all working very hard to do what we can, the fastest way that we can, the best way that we can. We certainly understand the concern and the care that you all have for your families as you've heard from my colleagues. You know, we also have children in the school district. We have family members. We have friends that also teach for the Omaha, teach and work for the Omaha Public Schools. And we certainly don't want to put anybody that we love and care for in any sort of jeopardy. And I just think that it's important that people remember that, yes, we are board members and we are elected officials, but we are human beings first. And I think that we deserve respect when we are being communicated with. I think that it's important for people to remember that we have families, we work full-time jobs, and we are human beings. And so I just ask that it is remembered that we deserve the respect and the dignity that a human being deserves when, when being communicated with. I don't think that anybody on this board would want to put any of our staff, any of our teachers, our administrators, anybody in any of our departments, in any sort of jeopardy. We don't want our kids, we're all scared, as you've heard over and over again. We're all scared. We're all terrified because nobody knows what can happen at any point in time. But I do believe that this board, our superintendent, the district team, I do believe wholeheartedly that they have planned and they have thought out in the most comprehensive way for our families to return safely to school based upon the information that we have from our medical professionals and just everything that we've been learning about COVID-19 and how to proceed with doing so. And with this, please know that we make no decision lightly. The board does not, superintendent does not. But this, we have been put in such a tense situation from the beginning because we cannot please everyone. If you think back to one of our first meetings with the, when this discussion started, mostly everyone was upset with us. All of public comment was about sending our kids back to school 100%. How dare you not allow our kids to go back 100%? And now, most of our comments are, how dare you send our children back to school? I mean, we're getting letters to our homes. Why do you want to kill our kids? Why do you want to kill our families? And that is certainly not the intent of any of us. So I just simply ask that just that everybody thinks about, number one, the way that we are addressed when being communicated with. And again, it's not all, everybody. And we certainly think those folks that do acknowledge the work that we put forth and are respectful in the communications that they send. But this is not an easy job for any of us. I can tell you that I work, I volunteer for the Omaha Public Schools Board and put forth more hours sometimes than I do than my paid job. This school board position is not just coming and sitting in front of here, in front of the cameras, in front of the public, twice a month. There is so much more involved in it. So much more involved in it. And again, I, I plead to you to understand that the decisions that are made, and we may not all agree on them. We may not all agree with them. We may not all agree with the decisions that the superintendent makes. But with that, it's important, like, we treat each other respectfully. And I ask that the public also considers that when addressing us and knowing that we are doing the absolute best that we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holman, and thank you for those comments, and every board member for those comments. The reason why we are having to make these decisions today, and not just today, but throughout our entire, through COVID, is because of the lack of leadership from above. So I think people should always remember that when they go to the polls, those leaders that fail to act and the leaders that have to act. Our next comment, our next thing is public comment. We have and we have more than I thought. 28 public comments. The board has adopted policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. I did mention that when we reach that hour, we will surpass that and allow everyone to speak. Mr. Ray will give every board, every speaker five minutes. He will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and one will be provided for you. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not mention the student or staff member by name and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us in looking at those types of details for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Mr. Ray. He will make sure that each board member gets a copy. As a reminder, we ask that you please spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment. It is 704. And our first speaker is Katrina.
Mr. Snow?
Yes, ma'am.
Should we just go ahead and do a motion now to waive?
You can entertain, go ahead.
What is the policy number?
8346.
8346. I move to waive policy 8346 on the time constraint of one hour.
There's a motion to waive policy 8346. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith and Ms. Ryan. Roll call, please. Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Goddard?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Pearlman? Ryan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipe?
Aye.
Ada? Motion carries. We, so we will still keep you at your limit of five minutes. If you do not want to use all your five minutes, that's okay. Our first speaker is Katrina Jacobberger. And after her is Sheri Porter.
Good evening. My name is Katrina Jacobberger. That's K-A-T-R-I-N-A-J-A-C-O-P-B-E-R-G-E-R. I live at 7610 North 33rd Street in Omaha. I would like to start this evening by saying thank you. Thank you, Dr. Logan. Thank you, President Snow, and thank you to the entire board and administration of this district for doing everything possible to protect our children and families. I am truly proud to be a part of this district. You were the first to require masks in school buildings. You were the first to provide a virtual option for families. You were the first to reduce the number of students in the buildings at one time. You considered food insecurities and have found a route to take care of our families. And I fully believe that your team looked at every plausible scenario and troubleshoot the best way to continue providing services for our community. Thank you. I wear a couple of different hats in our district, but right now I'm speaking to you as a parent. As a parent, I have two primary concerns. Firstly, knowing that our district has looked at all possible angles to prepare for a safe return to school, I find it very disturbing that one week from today, my sixth grader, an M-through-Z yellow kid, will make his way to the first day of school with a full roster of all of the sixth and seventh graders that attend his school. For my son, that's going to be roughly 750 children. After all of the precautions and all of the care taken to distance and protect our kids, I ask, why have we made this decision to include full capacity for one single day? This is the one day of school where nobody knows where they're going, where nobody knows the procedures and rules for staying safe on campus. And I'm very confused about taking that risk. Secondly, while you, our local leaders, are trying desperately to protect us, our state leaders have failed us. Douglas County was threatened with litigation for attempting to protect our community with a mask mandate. The city council doesn't meet for another week to discuss masking ordinance. And after that discussion, we will have to wait for implementation. And only after that, if our neighbors with whom we share community are also on board and we have universal masking in place, we'll be able to be in a position to control the spread of that virus. We continue to have untraced widespread infection in the metro area. Our students and families go home to a community where masking and protection is not required. Unfortunately, it is not enough if we continue to do the right thing when we are surrounded by people who refuse to do the right thing. I ask you to continue to protect our children and families through virtual learning opportunities until Douglas and Sarpy County are at 50 cases per million or lower with a static number or a decrease in cases for 14 consecutive days, as has been recommended through the directed health measures. Lastly, I would like to speak to you as a teacher. I am fortunate to be in a position that is perfectly suited for me, in a building that is supportive and proactive, while working for a district that has the well-being of our children and community as its central focus. I desperately miss my classroom and students and coworkers and hallways full of children and learning and teaching and the joy that I get to experience every day. I have spent an incalculable amount of time since April figuring out and being trained in the best way for me to interact in a virtual environment with all of those things. And as much as I want to go back, I want my community to be safe, alive, and free of the possible lifelong repercussions of surviving that virus. And I know that I can count on you to do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sheri Porter. And after Sheri is Narrell Nave.
Good evening. My name is Sheri Porter, S-H-E-R-I-P-O-R-T-E-R. And I live at 3322 Summit Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68112. I'm a parent of a fifth grader in the Omaha Public Schools. While I appreciate all that you have done to keep our child and our family safe, the school district is not in a silo. The efforts of Omaha Public Schools alone is not enough to keep us safe, not enough to control the spread of the virus. You cannot trust, I cannot trust, that all families are doing what is recommended when it is not required. You cannot trust that families will not send a sick or exposed child to school because the caregiver may absolutely have to go to work. We cannot trust that if a family member has COVID, but the kid still appears to be symptom-free, that that child will also be kept home. We need, at the least, a county-wide mask mandate to help slow the spread of the virus in the community in order for our children to be able to return safely only after the spread of the virus is contained. The number of deaths nationwide, quite frankly, is unacceptable. Thousands every day. I question constantly how many people have to die before masking is mandated and the population as a whole takes it seriously. I hope this is not a decision that you have to make. How many of our kids or teachers will have to die before we move to remote learning? Is there an acceptable percentage of death within the first day, weeks, months? Of course not. What is more alarming are those infected that survive with lasting life and health effects. Heart damage, mental fog, respiratory struggles, damage that cannot be undone. How many people are we willing to set to that fate? These decisions will not have to be made if you take this opportunity to protect our community by shifting to an all-virtual start to the school year and stay that way until we have less than 50 cases per million and a sustained decrease in cases for at least 14 consecutive days. Please protect our community. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Narrell Nave. And after is Bridget Hinesley.
Good evening. Hi. My name is Narrell Nave, N-A-R-E-L-L-E-N-A-E-V-E. I live at 5011 Country Club Circle in Omaha. I wanted to extend a warm greeting to Dr. Logan, President Snow, members of the board, and community members here tonight. We're here tonight to discuss a very scary, difficult, and multifaceted issue. I want to take this moment to thank you guys for the opportunity to share our thoughts and concerns. I would like to share a specific concern of mine, and that's the area of special education, particularly the area with students that have exceptional needs. I'm an alternate curriculum program teacher in OPS. For those of you that don't know what that is, it is a program for students that have such a severe disability, they require an alternate curriculum and extra special services. The experiences in our program are very different than your average general education classroom. I have 12 students on my caseload this year. I personally know six out of the 12 because I had them last school year. I'm confident that those six kids won't be able to wear a mask all day because of either sensory issues, not understanding or comprehending why they need to wear one, or just simply they're having a bad day. This is concerning for me because about 50% of my students have pre-existing health conditions or have immune-compromised health systems, which is very common with this population. Because this population needs structure and schedules, my students are coming to school all five days of the week, all students. My program is not unique. There are 36 different programs throughout this district, like mine. There are thousands of students within these programs. These other programs are also facing the same struggles and obstacles that I will be facing with my students. I do not know what other programs are doing, but my class will not be isolated to only my room. They're required to take their elective classes outside my classroom with other Gen Ed students, which I fully support in all their circumstances. That's kind of like my mantra, is getting them out mainstream with the other kids. 100% support that. But not during a global pandemic, that our country is handling poorly, that our state is handling poorly, that our city is handling poorly. This concerns me because I've already stated there will be few to none of my students that will be able to wear masks for a long period of times. This past month, I've had extreme fears that some of my students will die from this virus or suffer even more health issues. I fear there's a good chance that could happen to me or someone else without increasing the current restrictions. I believe we should be going virtually 100% to start until Douglas County's daily until Douglas County's daily positive case numbers go down significantly. As you've heard, UNMC recommends fifty cases per million people. When we reach those numbers for a period of time, I believe it'll be safe to reopen slowly with this three-two family model. Another reason I think we should not open our schools to in-person learning is it will contribute to already rapid rise of cases in Douglas County. And as we know, there is no mask mandate in the area, which is another scary component. Back in March, we shut our doors when cases were only rising a few per day. Actually, according to Nebraska Department of Health, the week of March eighteenth, there were less than ten cases a day. And now in the past week, we have an average of two hundred and forty-four positive cases a day. We are planning to go back in person? That doesn't make sense to me. Those numbers make me extremely uncomfortable. My students, this program, my job are the reason I exist. I cannot
One minute.
tell you how much I miss my students, how bad my heart hurts going from spending eight hours a day with them to only meeting a fourth of my class three times a week, an hour a day. Not being around the people I spend majority of my life thinking about and wondering how I can enrich their lives more has been the worst thing I've ever experienced. I've only survived because I keep telling myself pandemics don't last forever, but death lasts forever. The amount of pain and loss I've gone through with this temporary separation
Thirty seconds.
I can't imagine and fathom what it would be like to lose them forever. My biggest concern is not my health, it's my students' healths. Thank you for taking your time listening to my concerns.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bridget Hinesley. And after Bridget is Courtney Gertz.
Good evening. My name is Bridget Hinesley, and that's spelled B R I D G E T T E, Hinesley, H I N S L E Y. And I reside at twenty-eight oh-three State Street. I'd like to start by thanking Superintendent Dr. Logan and the Board for protecting our children from the very beginning of the COVID-nineteen outbreak. You've been ahead of the curve at every turn, and I need you to be ready to do that once again. The daily data updates are overwhelming, but one thing is clear. The Omaha metro area has not reached a level of containment of the coronavirus for it to be safe for our children to return to school in person. Requiring masks to be worn at school is absolutely necessary, but it's not enough when we are not required to in our community. My youngest daughter attended virtual summer school this year. As a parent, I got to listen in daily. She didn't like that much. The classes were engaging and the students were held to a high standard in the area of curriculum, attendance, and homework. Each teacher made sure that their students were aware that there was an issue that they had at office time and they could work with them if they didn't understand. Resource teachers were also available with office times as well. I can state with the utmost confidence that the teachers in this district are prepared to deliver quality content in a virtual environment because my family's experience was nothing more than, was nothing less than excellent. My oldest daughter also teaches for OPS. It was provided extensive training and the workshops on how to best teach in a virtual environment at the end of the school year. Our teachers are prepared, our students are able to learn, and it's safest to keep our children protected at home until this virus is contained. I'm going to leave you on a short note. The CDC has a threshold regarding a safe return to school, and we're not there yet. As stated by Dr. Burks yesterday, with an uncontrolled spread, twelve percent rate of positive tests, and no masks, I'm not sure how we're going to get there. We're not even close to the threshold for a safe return, according to UNMC. Please, I implore you, to keep our families, our teachers, and our community safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Courtney Gertz. Up next is Haley Taylor.
Good evening. I'm Courtney Gertis, and that's C O U R T N E Y and G E R D E S. And my address is eight-one-seven North Forty-eighth Street. I am so fortunate that I get to teach preschool as a special education teacher. I love being a part of this wonderful time and watching them grow. Each day, I get to see these young children start to build friendships, share their infectious enthusiasm, and demonstrate an amazing curiosity. In a preschool room, of course, there are some things that are not so easy for three- to five-year-olds, like understanding and keeping to personal space with adults and each other, not touching or messing with uncomfortable or unwanted clothing items like hats in the winter, not touching or messing with something on one of their peers in the classroom, and keeping fingers, toys, et cetera, out of their mouths. I, along with my fellow early childhood educators, are dedicated to our young students and have numerous strategies and resources we use. But this is a different situation right now. I want to provide what my students need in a safe and responsible way for both them and their families. This year, I will be traveling to three different schools, which is something many teachers do. How can I safely do this right now? What happens when a student at one school I've been at tests positive and then I have been to the other schools? How can we ensure our young students, who may not display symptoms, will not bring this home to their families? I'm concerned about the immune-compromised members of our community, including some of my students, and I would be devastated if something happened to any of them. As a teacher, I'm a problem solver. I plan and try to be proactive. But how can I be proactive when COVID is so unpredictable and we're seeing such an increase in positive cases? Please rethink this plan and keep our students, families, and staff safe. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Haley Taylor. Up next is Jared Wagenesch.
Hi, I'm Hallie Taylor, H A L L E Y T A Y L O R. My address is fourteen sixteen South Sixteenth Street. Am I waiting for a, oh, just go.
Yep, yep.
Thank you, thank you, cool. I want to start by saying very clearly, I love my school. Today was my first day back, and I can't tell you what joy I felt even just being in the hallways. I love my profession. I love my students, and I love this district. I have been a product of Omaha Public Schools from kindergarten through my senior year at Central, and I'm very, very proud to be employed by this district. I am thankful to be employed by a district that is leading the way with a mask mandate. Today, at my school, I was happy to see very clear signage, clear traffic patterns, social distancing reminders, visual reminders for how to appropriately wear our face masks. I'm happy to see a multitude at every ledge, corner, or desk of hand sanitizer that was available everywhere. I'm happy to see that, excuse me, I can see your thought, care, and concern, Dr. Logan, our Board, and our custodial and health staff have made in this impossible situation. COVID-nineteen is certainly an unprecedented time, but I can see my district working, but it is not enough. Community spread of COVID is out of control. I live and teach in a neighborhood of the zip code six-eight-one-oh-seven. My South Omaha community is spreading, and it is spreading untraced. It has been said, but I will say it again. Our district is being pushed to lead because others who are elected will not. The responsibility of our students' lives is on our collective shoulders. I know that it isn't the same weight that you bear as our leadership, but I feel that weight on my shoulders as well. I am here for you, I am here with you, and I want more than anything to return to my classroom. I cannot wait, I thought about this today, just one second. I cannot wait to do Handshake, Hug, or High-Five Fridays in the hallways. Someday, we'll get back to that. I can't wait. I can't wait to get tired of hearing, Ms. Taylor. But the responsibility of our teachers' lives is on our shoulders. The responsibility of our neighbors' lives are on our shoulders. The responsibility of our students' lives is on our collective shoulders. We are the help, we are the helpers, we are here right now. I believe that we need to move to a hundred percent remote learning as soon as possible so that we, as educators, can focus our back-to-school work time on developing high-quality lessons that we see in our classroom. I know how hard this is. I know how fearful we are in our Omaha community, but we are here and we are here together. Losing one is too many. The time to act is now. Every child, every day, prepared for success and able to thrive. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Jared. Up next is Ashley Underwood.
Hi, my name is Jared Wagenesch, J A R E D W A G E N K N E C H T. I live at three forty-seven North Forty-first Street. I'm an OPS parent and a public school teacher in another district. The other night, I was tucking my daughter into bed. She's eagerly awaiting starting first grade at Dundee Elementary. And she looked me in the eyes and she said, Daddy, I hope the coronavirus goes away by August eleventh. My six-year-old knows the day that we go back to school, thanks in part to her awesome kindergarten teacher. I know how bad kids want to go back to school, and I'm a teacher. I want to be back with my kids. But what my daughter doesn't know is how absent the leaders of our country and state and counties have been in doing what's needed to reduce the virus spread so that it's safe to go back. She doesn't know that her dad has gone on to the interactive New York Times tool that calculates how many infected people will walk into a building the size of the one she attends or the one that I teach in. She doesn't know how many teary-eyed conversations I've had in the last week with terrified educators and parents. My daughter doesn't know that the CDC and world-renowned UNMC medical experts who live in our own community have made it clear the infection rates are too high for our community to return to schools in person. So I need you to think about my daughter and her classmates and the brilliant educators who work with her. We know what will happen if we choose to ignore the experts. This school year may be their last. But here's the thing. When it's all over and we look back, no one's going to remember who was right or wrong. What they will remember is who tried to protect our community. And that's the opportunity that you all have tonight. You can be the leaders who finally choose to do what the experts are saying is necessary. We need to delay an in-person reopening until we've reached a significantly lower infection incidence rate. And if you're worried about offering the social services to our kids, please ask us teachers and the community. When we went into lockdown and we started the food distribution programs, I was there. And six feet with a mask to my right was a teacher, six feet to my left with a mask was a teacher. In the truck bagging up milk was a teacher. We will help you take care of our kids, it's what we do. You can listen to the experts and protect my daughter and her classmates and her teachers. You can show other school leaders in this metro area what real leaders do. They protect others. So I'm begging you tonight, listen to the experts. Please protect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ashley Underwood. Up next is Kathy Skurlock.
My name is Ashley Underwood, A S H L I U N D E R W O O D. And I live at eighteen oh-five South Fifty-first Street. I feel that as a district, we need to make decisions that keep all of our students and staff safe. Sure, students learn better when they are in a safe, stable environment where they're able to socialize with other children, but this isn't what we're giving them. If they have to wear masks and stay six feet away from each other and they're not allowed to work in groups or do partner work, and that still doesn't guarantee their safety, then why are we doing this? We have the resources to teach remotely. We just bought enough iPads for every student. Why are we working so hard to make our classrooms and offices fit into an unattainable standard when we all know that we will go remote anyway? Why risk the lives of our children, our staff, and all of our families when it's so unnecessary? That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathy Skurlock. Up next is Keegan Corf. Good evening.
Evening. My name is Kathy Skurlock, C A T H Y S C U R L O C K. Been to a few board meetings, the first one, speaking. Nervous, I tell my students I can teach in front of them. I can talk in front of a classroom every day, all day, but to get in front of my peers or colleagues or the Board is very intimidating and very nervous. First, I want to say thank you for your comments at the beginning to the Board members, specifically Ms. Ryan, Ms. Crackkey, Ms. Snipe, Mr. Pearlman, and Ms. Cassidy. Presence note. Dr. Logan, Board members. I'm addressing you this evening as a parent and as an educator. First, I want to thank you for the time and work you put into being a Board member and for your hard work and dedication for our students, staff, and families of OPS, especially during this unprecedented time. I appreciate the communication of the reopening panel, especially how OPS showed that as you are leaders in the community, you're the first to step out and to make a plan, make a decision, and I know that that wasn't easy to do. I was glad and OPS proud when I heard that you had signed a letter advocating for a citywide mask mandate. Thank you. I'm happy to hear that the City Council members are planning to go ahead and will be moving forward with the city ordinance for masks. Unfortunately, they won't be able to do anything until mid-September. I appreciate and I'm grateful that as a district, you have decided to require masks or face coverings for anyone in our buildings, of course, with exceptions as the district has laid out for certain groups and people, and that you are providing five masks for all staff and students. But with the current number of COVID cases in our county, I do not feel it is safe to open in any kind of face-to-face model. I'm concerned about students keeping their masks on while at school. I'm also concerned about the social distancing in the classrooms. I was in my classroom today and was barely able to make it work for fifteen kids to fit. One will have to sit in the teacher desk, and I am stuck in a corner at the front so that I'm able to see all of my students. Of course, this affects our community or togetherness in our classroom, and the distance makes it feel difficult, sorry, to maintain privacy when helping or redirecting individual students. I've heard many say, and I would agree, that students need the socialization and interaction that schools provide along with many of the services they receive that they wouldn't otherwise, specialized learning plans, nutritional support, academic and emotional support. But I feel like this can still be met virtually. The spring distance enrichment learning was lacking because it was seen as optional for students to participate. I think with the requirement of attending or participating in virtual or distance learning along with being graded, students will step up. And with the training and professional development teachers receive and will continue to receive, it will be much better. We should not dismiss the idea of starting virtually based on the experience of the spring. I am apprehensive, even fearful, of returning to in-class instruction, even with only fifteen students at the fifty percent student hybrid model, as it seems the virus is more likely transmissible in an enclosed area. I know that some of the positive COVID cases from summer activities were due to enclosed areas with very few people.
One minute.
And not to mention, our cases are rising. Just the other night, Channel Seven quoted National Resource naming Nebraska as part of the new epicenter. I miss my students and being in the classroom. I love helping students acquire another language and building a community of learners on their path to speaking Spanish. I will be teaching a whole new group of students this fall, and we are looking at less-than-ideal scenario of meeting for the first time.
Thirty seconds.
But our safety and health is what is important. But our safety and health is what is important. Again, I appreciate your support. And I know you and the district are working hard. I wanted to have my voice heard or at least be able to say I had the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keegan Korf. Up next is Lasagna Luther.
Hi, Keegan Korf. I live at 1936 South 37th Street, Omaha, Nebraska 68105. I'm here tonight as a constituent of Ms. Ryan and as a candidate for this Board of Education. This weekend, six-year-old Derek Ramirez Lopez was potentially the first child to die of COVID-19. The boy was a triple-organ transplant recipient, was preparing to start the first grade at our very own Jefferson Elementary School, a school in my own neighborhood. Jennifer Shalapia, Jefferson's principal and an employee of our district, got to be the one to break the news to parents in her school community this weekend, just before welcoming her staff back into their school home today. I was raised by an organ transplant recipient who, up until five years ago, suffered from a horrifying terminal illness that his transplant relieved. Today, he takes 10 to 15 daily anti-rejection pills and has developed new complications and conditions post-transplant. And he's someone I've only seen twice since the COVID outbreak impacted us in March for that reason. Another parent of mine decided to retire a year early from her job as an elementary school para rather than to expose herself and her family to potential transmission. We've seen the data on case numbers, and they are only accelerating by the day. According to the Omaha World-Herald, Phil Rooney, spokesperson for the Douglas County Health Department, says that of the county's 10,593 confirmed cases of COVID-19, 12.7% have been among people 19 years old or younger, meaning that more than 1,300 people in that age group have contracted the disease. This, again, is in Douglas County. That is enough people under 19 to fill an entire high school building. In a high school, of course, that's not disproportionately overcrowded like our very own South High population, which is about 3,000, give or take, depending on the day. If I had a PowerPoint with me, I'd show you a photo right now of a tweet from about 7:14 a.m. this morning of a high school in Georgia. This tweet's been shared over 30,000 times as of this afternoon. There was no 3-2 family model going on there and no mask mandate either. The hallway was so crowded, there was zero possibility of safely social distancing. This is a photo that feels like our everyday life in an OPS high school, and I can speak to that from experience as a former South Omaha educator. Even splitting students into two groups will not prevent crowded halls in our two largest high schools in the state of Nebraska. When kids head back to school, people will die. Schools will become hotspots for super-spread of the virus, and there is only one thing that we can do to prevent it. I stand here before you today as an advocate for teachers, but above that, as an advocate for our students and their families, to tell you what you already know. None of you at this table are to blame for the state that we are in and the challenges posed to schools and districts across our country and in our state right now. You know what's best for students. I'm here to encourage continued flexibility in your back-to-school plans and for a shift to 100% remote learning to start the school year. Whether it's delayed in-person start for a month or an entire semester spent virtually, I support you in making this challenging decision, Dr. Logan and the Board of Education. And I assure you that many of the parents, teachers, and students here tonight do as well. OPS leaders and educators, you have all been fearless in the monumental challenges facing you all, and we cannot thank you enough for that. I am here to be fearless for telling you that our lack of state and federal leadership is what got us here. Thank you all so much for allowing science to guide your practices. And please consider a remote exclusive start to begin the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lasagna Luther. Up next is Virginia Smith. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Lasagna Luther, L-A-S-O-N-Y-A-Luther, L-U-T-H-E-R. I live at 5825 Mary Plaza, Apartment 4203. Good evening, teachers, parents, students. OPS School Board Council and Superintendent Cheryl Logan. I am here today advocating for my daughter, who was unable to be here because she is at work. You said not to mention names, so I won't. But she is a 10th grader at Omaha North High School. I'm coming to you with this complaint as to why you're making students or parents plan to put their health and well-being in jeopardy so that they may go back to school now. Students cannot get the required classes that are not provided via remote learning. I'm particularly speaking about honors and AP classes that are not available and the option for remote learning. As a 10th grader that is in honors classes, I had a desire to be in AP classes for junior year. However, if you're unable to take the honor classes, you won't meet the requirements to take the AP classes the following year. By not making these classes available, your decision not only affects me but any other students, especially the upper-grade students who might need to do remote learning. What this comes down to is forcing students and parents to choose which is more important. Holding a student back because the people in charge did not have enough time to fully sort out the problems or have a student to succeed but consistently have to worry about what they might bring home, a virus that could harm their family in the long run. We, as a student, should not have to worry about anything other than our schooling and extracurriculars. But when we are, when we are parents, must make the decision that will put us at risk, it is no longer the problem of just focusing on our classes. It is putting stress and anxiety on the students that are susceptible to COVID-19, as well as their family members, because remote learning does not provide those higher-level classes. I'm truly being sincere about all of this and expressing my concerns at this time. Because I have been given the choice to go to school or remote learning. However, this choice could mean not being able to see some of my family once I start school and may even make it unable for my mother to continue to assist this family member that truly needs her assistance at times because of serious health concerns. This choice affects emotionally because it makes me to feel selfishly for even desiring to put my wants and needs over their health or to choose to do remote learning that will slow down my progress and throw my desires and needs out the window and care about my family health. I know, or at least hope, it was not your desire to make anyone make these decisions or force people to pick sides over the need for in-person school learning or their family's well-being. For me personally, I was a daughter before I was a student, and I do not ever want to put anything before my family. There are so many people in our community that have weakened immune systems, asthma, diabetes, cancer, pneumonia, multi-generational families, et cetera, to take into consideration. That is why I'm asking you today to take into consideration distance learning via webcam or other sources so that students can still interact with their teachers and their peers. That is why I have my mother standing before you today, advocating on my behalf, as I had to work today, helping to support my family. But I'm begging, in behalf of all students that maybe didn't have the courage or were unable to be here, that those teachers that do honors and AP classes to teach remotely or distance learning. I'm asking if the scoreboard truly does not want us to allow great minds that truly want to advance in their curriculums. What is the purpose of teaching? Wasn't that why teachers spent so long to learn to teach? Because I know it wasn't for the money.
30 seconds.
I know not every problem can be fixed. But if you truly care about the students and their well-being, then just ponder and act on what I said, if possible. But please don't throw it out the window and allow a lot of students to feel guilty that every day they have the potential to harm someone they love by bringing home COVID-19. I leave this decision in your hands. Sincerely, my daughter.
Thank you, Mrs. Luther. Up next is Virginia Smith. And after Virginia is Robert Miller.
Virginia Smith, V-I-R-G-I-N-I-A-S-M-I-T-H. I reside at 4228 South 147th Plaza. Ms. Ryan, my tone changed after hearing you. I prepared a statement because I have been disheartened by OPS with my son. However, I do agree that remote learning is imperative at this point. Maybe looking at nine-week increments and seeing how things go. I think this would be a really good time to reevaluate the structure of our public school system and the inconsistencies with education. There are too many children that slipped through the cracks, including my son, who used to love school but hates it. And it was forced to go to an alternative school that I didn't want him to go to because the board did not want to follow those funds to send him to another school. I would have to come out of pocket. I think COVID was a martyr because it exposed a lot of inconsistencies, a lot of issues with our government, with our public school systems, and within our community. I see, every day when I go to work, I have to wear a mask. I'm a cosmetologist and a licensed massage therapist. I spray down before and after each customer. If a client or a customer is not, I mean, a coworker is not being mindful of the distancing, I'm being mindful. I go to the store, I see people not wearing masks, people walking up on me to the point where I literally, I literally want to get violent because it's like you're not caring for me. Wearing a mask has became a political issue where it's either your team humanity or your team COVID. The mask work. Sending the kids back to school right now, as much as my daughters are so excited, she's going to be a freshman at high school, my daughter's starting her first year at Buffett, I'm excited for them. But at the same time, I understand the severity of this situation. I do trust the human body as it's designed to heal. However, when you have a lot of stupidity and ignorance around you, how can you control it? How can you keep it contained? I do think that we need to reevaluate this. I don't think that we need to reopen right now. I think you guys should really communicate with the teachers as they have some very awesome, creative ways that they have been interacting with their students. Communicate with other districts from other cities and other states and see what they're doing to stay engaged with their students. There's so many different ideas that people are having, and I think that we are limiting ourselves with just, you know, going to the two to three days. I think that's a great idea to start, but at the same time, our children need consistency. We already have kids that have behaviors. I definitely see an influx in that. And how are you going to practice social distancing in the office when you already have the office? Some offices are crowded with the same kids every single day. How can you do that? So I think the remote learning will definitely be beneficial, and it will also help inspire you guys to work together, get some more ideas from teachers, and maybe restructure this system. Because like I said, my son has fell through the cracks. He's very intelligent. And he's, he suffered academically. I felt like OPS has failed my child. But your tone, you changed my tone because I do feel like there are different board members sitting before me from when I was here six years ago. So, that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Up next is Robert Miller. After, on deck is Alex Gates.
Good evening, President Snow, Superintendent Logan, Vice President Holman, and board members of the school board. These are tough times, but OPS must do the right thing, and I'm certain you will. First of all, my name is Robert Miller, R-O-B-E-R-T-M-I-L-L-E-R. My address is 7301 North 107th Avenue, Omaha, 68122. My name is Robert Miller, and I am the president of the Omaha Education Association. First, thank you for your dedication to this district, and it doesn't go unnoticed. The last few times I was here, I spoke on collaboration and how important it was to have the teacher's voice. Teachers are the ones who are on the ground level making any decisions that this board makes on a daily basis, despite the challenges that we face. Tonight, I would like to thank the district for allowing the OEA to participate in the conversation with medical experts. Thank you, Dr. Logan. I hope it continues as future decisions will need to be made that impacts the classrooms during this time. Teachers are your experts. We just need to be a part of the discussion. Our communication has increased over the last few weeks. Communication plays a major role in times such as this. We appreciate the letter that was sent asking for a mask mandate, and we stand with you in asking for this mask mandate as OEA, along with other metro-area associations, sent a letter, too. Thank you to Dr. Wakefield for his ability to respond to questions and emails during this time. During this time of uncertainty where information changes from morning to afternoon, something that should be at the center of any decision is safety for all students and staff. We need to continue to address the safety measures on what it is going to look like. We need to have a district directive from, that all schools need to follow to enforce it. Leaving it up to individual schools becomes a challenge. At a minimum, there should be some directive for everyone to follow, like the OPS Code of Conduct, a guide. Classrooms will look, will not look the same this year as it's been known to. They were once filled with mini-desk tables, centers, computers, and book bins for more than 25 bodies in a classroom. Sadly, that is not the reality this year. You now have teachers eliminating tables, centers, classroom libraries, and the list goes on. All of this is for the sake of room for having students sitting six feet apart. A teacher sent me a picture of her room where there were only 15 desks, being six feet apart, going from the back of the room clear up underneath the permythium board that is on top or on the wall, literally from one side to the other, only 15 desks. Traditionally, there would be excitement going back to the classroom, eager to meet friends, students, welcoming classrooms, conversations taking place on what they did over the summer, and a variety of other emotions. Sadly, with the cases continue to rise in Douglas County, fear and anxiety is what staff are feeling. They want nothing more than to be back in the classrooms with their students but are very fearful that safety is not being considered. The district is putting all the time and energy in making sure the buildings are ready to go. But for how long? It isn't for the love of learning for their jobs, but the desire to remain healthy for their loved ones and continue to educate for the leaders of tomorrow. In a recent survey, 1,393 teachers responded of how comfort they were of coming back. And only six of them responded saying that they were completely comfortable. Forty responded with, they were somewhat comfortable. And the remaining 1,347 stated they were not comfortable at all. Employees should not be fearful to come to work. Measures must be taken and guidelines must be followed. The cases continue to rise. It is time to reevaluate our plan. It is unsafe to hold a person, in-person PD prior to school starting. Then why should it be unsafe for the classroom to be filled with students and teachers for a day? Opposed to purchasing school supplies, many teachers are setting up their wills. Let that sink in. 31-year-olds filling out a will. In closing, keeping schools safe for everyone is strongly needed. It allows children to look forward to being in an encouraging environment that promotes social and creative learning. As you consider the next steps to take, try to put yourself in the shoes of teachers to see if their safety is being addressed. Teachers are here to educate our students, but at what cost? Their health? Let's be the district who honestly puts kids first. Students, staff, and community members are counting on you just to do that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alex Gates. Up next, after Alex, is Travis Petty.
Good evening. My name is Alex Gates, G-A-T-E-S. I live at 2612 North 97th Avenue, Sub-District 3. I am the father of four OPS students. Soon, my wife Jamie and I will have a first grader at Edison Elementary, a third grader at Wilson Focus School, a seventh grader at Lewson Clark Middle School, and a freshman at Central High School. I want to begin by saying thank you to the board for the motion to suspend the rules and allowing more than one hour of public comment. Thank you. I'm grateful for the opportunity to stand before the board and Dr. Logan this evening to advocate for teachers, educators, OPS parents. by asking you to reconsider how we start school for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. The data are clear. It's not safe to return to school in person next week. It breaks my heart. There is nothing I want more than for things to return to normal. It breaks my heart every time one of my children says, "After the coronavirus," or "When this is all over," at the dinner table. They miss their teachers, and they miss their friends deeply. We all miss these things we took for granted before COVID- nineteen took these opportunities away from us. But I'm concerned that returning to school next week in person will only make matters worse and further extend the time it'll take to return to normal. I know this because nearly every single person I talk to about my children, every person I talk to, my children's pediatrician, teachers, parents, building leaders, everyone acknowledges the reality that if we return to school in person next week, it's not going to last. Will it last a week? Two weeks? A month? Will we make it to Thanksgiving before returning to one hundred percent remote learning? And if we do, at what cost? Every single one of us in this room knows that teachers didn't choose this profession out of fame or fortune. They chose this career because of a love of children and a love of learning. We owe it to them to advocate for their safety and to protect their ability to continue doing what they love. Dr. Logan, members of the board, I'm well aware you're facing pressure from local, state, and federal officials to, quote, "open our schools." The reasons aren't purely, purely rooted in politics. I too worry that there are many vulnerable students in our community who haven't seen, haven't seen a teacher in a very long time. With all the added stress related to this global pandemic, I'm deeply concerned for the emotional well-being and safety of our students. Thankfully, your forethought earlier this year means that very soon, every single student in OPS will have an iPad with onboard LTE connectivity. When the New York Public Schools District, New York City Public School District scrambled to hand out devices and mobile hotspots at the beginning of the pandemic, it wasn't just so students can continue doing homework during the shutdown. They did it as a way for teachers to stay in touch with their students and make sure they are safe. They recognize how important this relationship is between a student and a teacher, and they know that if we, if it couldn't happen in person, technology would allow these relationships to continue, and technology can help ensure students are safe at home. Very soon, we will have this technology, and if we can delay the start of the school year just a bit to make sure these devices are ready to deploy, we can have a detailed plan in place to make sure all students are seen, heard, loved, healthy, and safe at home. With my remaining time, I wanted to share a quote from a teacher I know who shared her feelings online. She's found a way to articulate this much better than I could. She said, quote, "No classroom libraries. That could spread the virus. No playground equipment." The list goes on. There are a ton of new protocols and information that changes daily. So for the people saying we have to go back for kids' mental health, picture your kiddo eating lunch in isolation so they can maintain social distancing. Picture your child at recess not being able to touch anything. Is this the kind of socializing you've been calling for? Because everything is different, and I do not feel okay. And how do we expect her to feel okay? I don't feel okay, and every minute as we inch closer to the start of the school year, I feel less and less okay. You have my support to push back the start of the school year and begin fully virtual. I trust you, Dr. Logan, to make the right decision, and I trust you all as board members to support her in that decision. Thank you.
Up next is Travis Petty. Following him is Molly Mary Davies.
Good evening. My name is Travis Petty. I'm a veteran of the U.S. Air Force, and my, excuse me, significant other is a teacher. I'm concerned about the reopening of schools. No one's been able to do it. They've tried it in Israel. In June, they claimed they had triumphed the virus. They still closed down, not even a week in. No matter how much we spend, this virus is going to completely devastate our schools. Hong Kong spent five-point-four million dollars U.S. for each of their schools. They had little shields for mealtime. They had thermometers, touchless thermometers. They checked students every day. Social distancing. They had masks, and they still shut down. Namely, that was because of their community spread. But we don't have any of that. Even in our own United States, in Indiana, we had Greenfield Central Junior High School. Day one, they had a confirmed case of coronavirus and had to scramble to shut down. Science dictates that this is a mistake to reopen the schools and not go virtual. From Dr. William Hathline, a professor at Harvard Medical, evidence suggests that coronavirus more efficiently than adult, excuse me, more efficiently affects children than adults. It unfortunately has milder symptoms in children, but at the same time, they have ten to a hundred times more molecules within their nasal and throat, nasal passages and their throats. And if they cough and sneeze, that goes into the air. They are by far the best spreaders of this virus. And we cannot trust them to keep their masks on, sealed to their face a hundred percent of the time. They're going to have to breathe. They're going to have to go get water. They're going to have to eat. If students are exposed to others who are infected, then they will obviously become infected. This may not happen immediately, but give them ten minutes, an hour, even two hours in the same classes, they're going to become infected. And what happens when they go home to their elders? They're going to infect their elders, who are more likely to die. Our teachers all have elders in their lives, whether it be a mother, a grandmother, and we are asking them, by forcing them into schools, to either stop going to see their elders or to put them in mortal peril. Even UNMC has said, "We are not prepared to go back to school." We are more than prepared to go to school online, a hundred percent remote. We spent the twenty-seven-point-six million dollars on those iPads. The teachers have had forty-six-plus hours of distance learning training. I think it's the wisest move to go one hundred percent online. Thank you.
Travis, real quick, before you go, can you spell your name and state your address, please? Thank you.
Yes, sir. T R A V I S P E T T Y. Address seven-five-two-nine Wyoming Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Molly Davies. After her is Audra Gibbons.
Hi, it's nice to see you all. My name is Molly Davies, Legally Mary Davies. I live at twenty-three oh five South Thirty-Fifth Avenue, six-eight-one oh five. My last name is spelled D A V I E S, and I'll be very brief because I don't need to be redundant. I'm very proud of my colleagues and my friends and parents that are in the audience for standing up and, and standing up for themselves today. I also want to acknowledge that I think the district has done an exceptional job in planning for this. We are the envy of other metro district teachers who are constantly asking us what's going on in our buildings as we are having this ongoing conversation about a safe return to school. And so I thank you. I honestly believe from the bottom of my heart that you have put your hearts and souls into guiding people through this, and I can see the evidence in the buildings. When I was at school today, I was really heartened by all of the work that has gone into everything and all of the conversations I had with my administration, my colleagues. So I thank you for that. I just want to thank the parents that are injecting inequity into the dialogue. I just want to say that I am here for that, and there are hundreds of teachers that are here for that, and they're ready to have that conversation. And I want to assure the board that there are so many teachers who, like in the spring, are ready to drive to students' houses to show them how to use technology through windows. I drove broken charger cords away and brought fresh ones to children who needed them, drove PDFs of chapters so they could not fail their classes when they had, you know, maybe not made the best choices prior in the semester. And there are hundreds of us that are ready to meet that occasion. So I hope that you'll ask us to support you should we go to remote learning, and I would just encourage the district to take very seriously all of the comments made tonight, and I know that you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Audra Gibbons.
Hi, my name is Audra Gibbons, A U D R A G I B B O N S, and my address is one-six-zero-two-eight Nottingham Drive. I am a first-grade teacher for the district, and my students have only completed seventy-five percent of kindergarten and have now been out of traditional schooling for close to five months. I'm imagining a lot of faces filled with uncertainty and tears as these babies walk into my classroom for the first time next week. And while I've been thinking about it for months, I am still working out a safe way to be able to comfort these students while maintaining appropriate social distancing and ensuring proper mask usage. My classroom is my home away from home. I love the safe space that I have created for my students, but so many of the things that I cherish and the things that helps my students thrive, small group rotations, partner or group work, sitting together on the carpet for a read aloud or class meetings, none of those things will be able to work under the new guidelines. As I read through the reopening guidelines, I see things like eliminate unnecessary furniture or rugs and face all the dust in the same direction and keep a seating chart, which will be critical if or when contract tracing is necessary. None of these things sound like the warm and friendly or engaging classroom that I work so hard to provide for my students. In the past five months as a teacher during the COVID- nineteen pandemic, the public has changed their opinion several times. When school buildings first shut down, people were quick to acknowledge the importance of schools and teachers who miraculously changed all their plans in a moment's notice. Teachers put on their capes and tried tirelessly to reach out to all of our students despite little to no direction from the district. Teachers had no formal training for this sort of thing, yet somehow, some way, teachers made it happen because that's what teachers do. We make things happen. When teachers were told to practice for active shooter drills, we did. When teachers are only given twenty textbooks, but we have twenty-three students, we take our time to rip apart the pages, make copies, and make it work. When teachers are told that consumable materials are no longer consumable, we work through ways to make journaling and whiteboards work. Teachers somehow always make the impossible possible. But asking teachers to walk into a classroom in the middle of a global pandemic is simply too much. This request goes back to the notion that teachers can always figure out a way to make things work. Unfortunately, teachers cannot swoop in and fix this problem. I know the board and the district are facing mounting pressure to reopen school buildings, but I am here to tell you we cannot safely or responsibly reopen our doors, doors at this point without getting a mask mandate or seeing a significant decline in our numbers. We cannot have it both ways. Either we have a mask mandate for the state, or we skip the mask and we stay home for distance learning. A mask mandate within the schools is a good start, but what about the other seventy-five percent of time when students and faculty are outside of our buildings? We can only control what is available to us. My classroom may be as sterile as an operating room, but I can't control what others are doing around town. A mask mandate would force that issue. Students and teachers will become collateral damage. I personally am terrified to return to school. When I inquired about my options, I really wasn't given many choices that I considered workable options. I could take a leave of absence, which would leave me without pay or benefits. I could get a doctor's note and request to become a remote teacher, only to later find out that that means a heavy workload, something like forty students on my roster, or I could walk away from my job altogether. I have two kids of my own, and I want you to know that my daughter cried when I told her I had to return to work today. "Why, mommy? Why are they having you go back to work if we're supposed to be staying at home to keep people safe?" she said. "I'm worried about me, and I'm worried about my family, but one of the things that I am most concerned about is accidentally spreading the virus to someone who couldn't survive."
One minute.
Or having a student get sick because I can't control the many variables of a first-grade class during a pandemic that is uncontrolled in our community. As much as I love our class, my classroom, there is nothing there worth the death of one student or parent or teacher. In recent weeks, teachers standing up and saying enough have made, have been made out to be villains. We're somehow terrible educators who are calling for distance learning this fall. We've been busy sending emails to local officials, making phone calls to government leaders and holding demonstrations in hopes that someone is willing to listen to the science. Douglas County is currently trending upward with a positivity rate of eleven-point-one percent. According to UNMC, communities that have more than fifty cases per million should not be reopening their buildings face to face. Douglas County is currently at a hundred and eighty-one cases per million. We have uncontrolled widespread cases in our community. In March, when our schools shut down, I was proud of how swiftly our district moved to mitigate the spread in our community. Some articles now attribute the shutdown of school buildings for saving tens of thousands of lives. I am not a villain, villain, but I am calling on you to switch to the only safe, responsible, and humane avenue right now, and that is remote learning. Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker, give me one second. Dr. Logan put something in my ear and got a little flustered. She does that very well. Our next speaker is Janet Kohl.
Hi, good evening. My name is Janet Kohl, K O H L L. My address is one zero seven South one hundred and twenty-eighth Plaza in Omaha. I am the mother of four OPS alumni, and I have a current junior at, soon-to-be junior at Burke High School. I feel like the lone voice in the forest right now. I'm a little gobsmacked about what I've heard tonight. There are fifty-two thousand students in OPS, according to the OPS website. Dr. Logan indicated that four thousand have signed up for remote learning. I guess I'm here to speak for the forty-nine thousand others. I am the mother of five children. My mother taught at Omaha North High School for nearly twenty years. I don't think she'd recognize this district right now. If I wanted to live a risk-free life, I would not have had one child, let alone five, and my mother wouldn't have had six, and I'm the sixth of that. My sisters are teachers. My mother was a teacher. We need to return to school safely. From what some of the teachers have said and from what the district has done, many things are in place to make that safe. There are some top causes of teenage deaths in this country. Among them are accidents and suicide. If I got as nervous every time my kid went in the car, I wouldn't let him get a driver's license. I'm more concerned about kids' mental health if we don't return to school safely. I bet every one of us knows someone, unfortunately, in this room who is touched by teen suicide. I came here and some other parents I know came here tonight to talk to you about fall sports. Academics are a priority, definitely. Definitely a priority. Remote learning did not go well in the spring. If we go fully remote in the next two weeks, I just don't trust that my kid, who's going to be a junior, and junior in high school is a very important year, is going to get much of an education. We can't compare ourselves to other countries. We have to compare ourselves to Millard, to Ralston, to Westside. I was extremely disappointed that my senior, who graduated last year, did not get an in-person graduation. I pushed to return to the Burke tradition of having a graduation in the stadium. That was shot down. Westside had a graduation in the stadium, but we just axed the whole things at OPS. I am asking the district to do what the other districts are doing and return to school safely. I am asking the district to do what the other schools are doing and safely return to sports following the NSA guidelines. Sports will look different. They definitely will look different. But our kids need hope. Our kids need hope that they will have an opportunity that is provided to the other kids at other districts. If we don't return to sports, our kids are If we don't return to sports, our kids are basically hostages because transfer rules are not going to be waived. So they will be ineligible. Inequity has been brought up. It will be unfair if our kids do not get the same opportunities as other kids in districts. There can be COVID-specific waivers signed. And OPS may face lawsuits if kids are not able to compete in sports like there are in other districts. They cannot simply transfer and be eligible. The ninety-day transfer rule will not be waived. Thank you. I know it's a hard thing you're dealing with, but I appreciate my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Wendy Goldberg. After Wendy is Jennifer Knight.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Goldberg. I'm the executive director of the Tri-Faith Initiative in Omaha, Nebraska. I don't have a single kid who's ever gone to OPS. I'm a graduate of Westside High School. And yet I come here to appeal to you as a civic leader. On April eighth, I had a conversation with Dr. Logan and she informed me of her leadership. And I think there is only one path through the challenge that we are in front of, and that is leadership. I trust you, Dr. Logan. I have tremendous respect for the dedication that you have given to this district and to the city to lead against all odds. And I implore you to stay with your gut reaction to know that the children need to be served, that the health and welfare of our children comes first. I am a person of faith and I put my faith in you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Knight. It says Delaney for the spelling, but go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Knight and it's K-N-I-G-H-T. My address is four eight zero six North one hundred and thirty-ninth Street. I've been an OPS parent for seventeen years. This will be my eighteenth year. I've spent countless hours volunteering at the school. I'm a writer by trade and I used to help out with the state writing test and help with reading and writing all the time. I am a huge proponent of education. I've been very pro OPS. And so when I come today, I feel like, as Janet said, I feel like I am too, speaking against a completely different viewpoint. But I truly appreciate you listening to my viewpoint and I think there's several people out there that have viewpoints like this as well. So thank you for that consideration. So actually, I want to talk to you a little bit about two things, and one of them is about sports in the fall. And so if we do have school in the fall and they are in person, I would really like sports to be part of that. And partly, it's the parent's choice to be in sports. There are no rules that say you have to. Parents can decide whether they want to take that risk or not for their child. Another reason why is that I feel like as we're part of the metro Omaha, we are all part of the metro Omaha and I don't want OPS to be the lone school that descends from this. I feel like that will be harsh on our district. Parents will be angry, kids will be angry. I feel like not being involved with sports promotes the idea that our kids are separate. They are not equal. I think kids will just, I think it'd be horrible on their feelings. I just, I just think they're going to be lack of opportunities as well. I wanted to bring you an idea of a lack of opportunity if we didn't have sports. For a kid that I've noticed, I've been a cross-country mom for four years and there's a kid, he's at Omaha South High School. He transferred there last year from Bryan. He is the fifth fastest runner in the state. He was not able to compete varsity level because he transferred last year. I looked up his times today. He is fast. He runs in the fifteens and that is scholarship quality. And this kid is going to be denied that opportunity. It breaks my heart. I talked to his coach last year saying, "Why is he running JV?" And it was because he transferred. You're going to be denying so many opportunities to students who have worked hard if they don't, if they're not able to participate in sport. All right, here's another thing. Kids see each other all the time. I have teenagers. They are out and about all the time and when they are in school fifty percent of the time, they will be out. They're going to be hanging out, they're going to be playing soccer, they're going to be at downtown, they're going to be running around. They are not going to be home and they are not going to be saying, "Hey, let's study today." They're going to be doing whatever they want to do and I feel that is because this spring, there was a lack of consistent education and that is in their mind already. My daughter already has said, "Hey, I'm just going to do what I want to do whenever I want to do it." And she has no idea that you guys are going to be pushing education. And I don't think that it's been told to them and I don't think that she knows about it. I don't think the other kids knew about it. So the kids are going to be running around with each other and passing around whatever with each other. I just don't think they're going to be staying home and being safe. I do think that with kids and our education, that was a spring, I think that the education gap in our system is going to be widened and widened and widened. And already, we have a wide education gap. I've been in the district, as I said, eighteen years and we have seen huge changes. And I feel so hard on these kids who are not getting the education that they need and they deserve. I just, it breaks my heart to think of some of these kids not being able to read and write, going to first grade and not being able to catch up. My sister-in-law has talked about that. She's an ex-principal working on her education doctorate. She's mentioned that too, how she has seen this education gap in OPS. And I just feel that this is leading more towards that. NSA has said move forward with sports. I feel OPS should do the same. I feel it should be a parent's choice. Let them exercise their personal rights. It's not mandatory. Parents can choose us, right? I also feel like parents should be able to choose if it's remote or if it's all day. I feel like that should be a choice of the parent. I feel like kids will learn so much more when they are at school. I just, I just cannot fathom how the education is going to drop tremendously. It just breaks my heart to think about that. Anyway, I am wide open for discussion and I know this is completely against what you have heard, but it is an alternative point of view. I appreciate you thinking about it and giving this serious consideration.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eric Servellon. After Eric is Alan Haushild.
Good evening, President Snow, Dr. Logan, members of the board. My name is Eric Servellon, E R I K S E R V E L L O N. I live at four four two seven South Twenty-first Street, six eight one oh seven. I kind of hate that I have to be here and say what I'm about to say because I consider myself an eternal optimist. And the politics of the day have made me more skeptical, more pessimistic because our national leadership has failed us. Our state leadership has failed us. Our county leadership has failed us, has failed our kids. I'm here before you as maybe a last step or last hope to entreat you to start day one remote learning. Dr. Logan, President Snow, you, members of the board and your staff, I know you've moved small mountains, even big mountains, to get where you are now. You have the foresight to order fifty-four thousand iPads to make sure that they're connected, self-service, so everybody can get connected to education and get to learning. I get that. I'm here as a private citizen, but I serve on numerous boards, nonprofit boards, all of them serve North and South Omaha. And what I'm seeing is that we're not ready to go back. That we need more time to prepare to make sure that every student, every day, is prepared for success from day one. I hear some parents talking about being sued for sports. I'm worried about being sued for a kid dying. I'm worried about being sued for thousands of kids contracting a virus that we don't know everything about yet. I talked about how the state has failed us and our governor, he did say something that's very pertinent. He said policymakers should be the one deciding whether we open or close. I see nine policymakers in front of me right now. You have the opportunity, you have the choice to start day one remote learning. And I get it, sometimes politics gets involved. You've heard so many parents, you've heard from teachers, you've heard from health professionals. If you need more of a mandate, this is it. These parents and these speakers, they're the proof. They're the mandate you need. And Dr. Logan, President Snow, if you need more mandate, you know how to reach me. I know where to talk. I know how to talk a little. I'll get the parents, teachers. We'll start further grassroots advocacy action because if you need more voices, keep asking for them. Thank you so much for the time. Thank you so much for everything you've done. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Up next is Alan Haushild. Please spell your name and state your address.
Yeah, Alan Haushild. That's A L A N H A U S C H I L D. Greetings, Superintendent Logan and OPS Board members. Thank you for the commitment to the school district. I understand the complexity of your decisions, especially with the COVID-19 in the community. I, like everyone here, wish COVID wasn't here. I wish we all were wearing masks. But to be honest with you, we don't operate in a world where there's zero risk. There's risk that we may step out and get hit by a car. So for this to wait until it's a hundred percent non-risk to go back to school, I just don't, I just don't think that's possible ever. I wish, I wish in a utopian society, yeah, we wouldn't have to deal with this. But in the same respect, what I've learned over the last five months with the coronavirus is that as a society, we've been able to adapt. We have face masks, six-foot distancing, hand soap, plastic face guards, antibacterial stations. I was impressed with the number of antibacterial stations. I trust Dr. Logan and her management team on putting the safety measures in place for our children. I really, really do. So I understand the first twenty speakers tonight were teachers and I understand your fear and my heart goes out to you. But for the community that's not teachers, I'd like to kind of express what my experience has been. You know, I'm a private business owner, so when COVID happened, I've got payroll to keep up. I've got mortgage, I've got commercial rent space that I need to do. I adapted. My kids have worked all summer with seniors who are the most at high risk. They've adapted. I see people playing baseball and club sports. I see people out and about. I see teenagers getting together. We've adapted, okay? So with the safety measures we talked about, we're adapting, okay? And I am confident with our teachers and our leadership, if we model this and we explain this, that students will follow. Throughout mankind, we've always evolved and we've adapted. A topic that's near and dear to me is that, I lost my notes there, is in regards to the recent decision to cancel the OPS graduation ceremonies. I understand it, but it's also disappointing to see all of our peer institutions in the Omaha area hosting graduation parties, seeing those families post the events. They followed the same protocols as OPS would have. We just chose not to. They chose to have the event. I have the same concern that we are so focused on the fear. There's so much fear tonight. And we have every right to be fearful. But at some point, we got to focus on opportunity and we have to have hope. We have to give our students hope. And my fear is that we're going to preemptively eliminate opportunities for our kids, for our kids' sports, okay? Also, I think the absence of school or sports in high school will likely increase the likelihood of alcohol drug use, depression, and suicide in our community. Those TV cameras aren't going to report on those numbers because those are dirty things that nobody wants to hear. We all know kids in our community are impacted. They come from broken homes. I know when I was young, the dark days were going to school, or excuse me, the light in my world was going to school. It was able to do sports. And guess what? A lot of those kids haven't been able to go to school. They haven't had positive role models, no coaches, no teachers to go to. Don't forget those kids. They are a beacon if you can go to school. You're their savior, okay? So don't forget those kids. Also, in regards to furthering that decision on sports, I trust my local athletic director, I trust my coaches, I trust my principal, I trust my superintendent, okay? They are more hands-on. They see the local situation and what's happening. I recommend and I trust them and I urge you to give them the ability to make local decisions at their school level. I just want to be treated like all the other class schools and have the ability for my son to compete in high school and he's got a chance for a college scholarship. And I'd really love to see him have the opportunity to compete, which gives him a chance to do so. And also, twenty years from now, he's going to remember running and the times with friends. He's not going to remember chapter six of his math home book. So don't take away the opportunities for these kids. Don't take away their hope.
That's time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nikisha Jones. She had to leave, okay. Our last speaker is Valerie Adams.
Hi, good evening. My name is Valerie Adams, A D A M S. I live at sixty-six zero eight North one hundred and thirty-third Street. I just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. At this time, I just, I want to express that as a parent of three OPS students, I am not afraid to be sending my children back to school. They are excited and they are ready to be going back as well. I feel comfortable and confident with the safety measures and protocols that OPS has implemented thus far. With that, I am also here to advocate for the return of fall sports activities with the return to school. Just as classroom work is important for the academic, social, and emotional growth of our children and future society, the role of athletics is equally important to those individuals who are interested, motivated, gifted, and talented in the many sporting activities that are offered in our schools. To take sports off the table is to deny them the ability to perform in the areas that they have been able to express their individuality. Schools are to help children find and harness their individual potential, not just in, but also outside the classroom. How can we deny or take away their experience to participate in areas that harness their unique abilities? Please understand that no sports for kids means we will snuff out a big part of their character development, self-confidence boosting, social skill building, drive, and determination to stay academically eligible. But one other component we should most definitely not overlook is their opportunity to maintain physical health and fitness. And that's something we are striving to do all the time, especially amongst COVID, is to be healthy. We need our kids to be out, active, and building their immune system through exercise. We are giving choice to families and students to participate with in-person school or remote. Therefore, we also need to give students and families choice to participate in activities and sports. I know we can make accommodations and make sports safe with many of the same procedures we are implementing with in-person school attendance. We can and should give choi- We can and should give choice for both in and out of the classroom experiences. Please let all kids have the opportunity to play sports this fall. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last of our public comment. So we're going to switch over to the consent agenda. And I will give others, just want to make sure a lot of people are going to be leaving and give you some time. All righty. Go ahead. You're good.
You don't have to leave, just letting people know.
It's funny, everyone says they, how much they trust us and then they just leave right before they-
Yeah, when we make the actual decisions, yeah.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is here before us.
So moved.
There's a motion by Ms. Ryan, second by Ms. Snipe. I'll just put it together. Is there a second, Mr. Smith? Second by Mr. Smith. Any abstentions?
Yes. President Snow, I have one. I need to abstain from H20, please.
All right. Any other? All right, Mr. Wright, roll call, please.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Pearlman. Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Nynna.
Moving on to our first action item, which is legislative update. Our lobby's Blair McDonald is here to give us the rundown of the most exciting day probably in the legislature.
Okay, so nice to be back in person with you all, nice to see your faces with the masks, of course. So I have a lot to go over with you since the legislature reconvened for their final 17 days on July 20th. I'm going to kind of start with grouping some of our issues together initially and then I'll go down through the list of remaining bills that we're monitoring that are in numerical order, but for the time being, going to do a little bit of jumping around on the matrix for you. Okay, so I'm going to start off with the property tax relief plans. Those bills, since those are kind of the hottest topic right now for us in the legislature. Debate on LB 1106 with AM 2870 was the property tax relief plan that would provide foundation aid to all schools and lower property valuations for school taxation purposes. It's on page 23 of your matrix, but a better description of the actual bill is included in LB 974, which is on page 19 of your matrix. It is the updated version of LB 974 from earlier in the session, which OPS also opposed. We have positions of opposition to both 974 and 1106. LB 1106 was filibustered on general file during the first week we came back to session. It is still on general file, but the sponsors would have to show 33 votes for it to be rescheduled. And LB 1106 continues to be tied to LB 720, the Imagine Nebraska Tax Incentives Act, and LB 1084, which provides funding to UNMC for a Department of Defense help-funded biocontainment unit. LB 720 on its own is still on select file, but since 1106 and 720, both failed when we came back and debated them the first week of session, there have been a number of pivots into other property tax relief plans. And what I want to discuss are a couple different plans with you. AM 3079 is the School Property Tax Stabilization Act. There is a description of that on pages 28 and 29 of your matrix. This is an amendment which we discussed in our legislative committee. It's a product of discussions of a small group of senators that were meeting over the break to discuss these issues. The plan would give money to school districts, mostly rural and non-equalized, outside of the TOSA formula. It would give an amount of foundation aid to around 178 school districts as drafted that have resources to fund at least 70% of their formula needs. The remaining 30% of their budget and needs as a school district would be split as a 50-50 match with the state. The state would match 15% of their remaining needs and the school district itself would have to kick in the other 15. This was one of the options that the small groups of senators were considering as an alternative to LB 1106. The legislative committee discussed this plan and this amendment, AM 3079, and made the recommendation to the board to oppose this amendment. I believe we could see some type of version of this program next session. We've already heard from a couple senators considering some type of stabilization aid as a foundation aid outside the formula. Another bill I want to discuss that we've been looking at, watching, is LB 930. It is Senator Breezy's priority bill, which is on general file, that would raise the minimum amount the state would put into the property tax credit fund every year to 275 million from 224 million. The appropriations committee has already decided to fund it this year at 275 million. That was pre-COVID and is still in the budget. But wanted to discuss that with you. It's not on your matrix because we were only monitoring it as of late. That brings me then to LB 1107, which is the new property tax relief plan that was dropped this afternoon. We have seen the amendment, it's 1107 as originally drafted, was a shell bill in the revenue committee that the speaker brought. So it is now kicked out with an amendment that has a lot of things in it. So I'm going to do my best to discuss some of it. There is a new version of 720 in it, including, and that's the Imagine Nebraska Act, there'd be $25 million each for the first two years of these tax incentives. They'd be capped at 25 million a year for just the first two. And then there is also LB 930, which would bring the statutory minimum of the property tax credit fund to 275 million, as well as other, a refundable income tax credit based on the amount of school district property taxes paid during the prior year to every taxpayer. So this, again, this is a refundable income tax credit against your property taxes paid only for school taxation purposes. So you would claim it on your individual or corporate return and the first year, they would like to have this fund at 125 million, beginning FY 2020 to 21. If the net receipts exceed forecast of all of our receipts brought in, all of our revenue brought in, if the net receipts exceed forecast by 3.5% and our cash reserve is below 500 million, then 50% of the excess or over the 3.5% is certified to be added to the original 125 million to increase the amount of this new income tax credit fund. If net receipts exceed forecast by 3.5% and the cash reserve is at or above 500 million as drafted in this version of the amendment, it would be, then 100% of that excess over the 3.5% is certified to be added to the original 125 million. So by the fifth year of this new income tax credit program, this, they would like the fund to be at 375 million. This is outside and separate from the regular property tax credit fund.
One second, sorry. So that's the original credit fund and this creates a new one with 375?
Correct. This is like a separate tier.
I just want everybody to know that it's a separate one.
It's a separate tier that's similar to the original. once that amount reaches 375 million, it can increase annually by the amount of overall statewide increases in valuations. So it doesn't cap our, the school district's ability to tax or levy. It doesn't affect our property tax authority. And it would be available to residents and non-residents who own property in Nebraska. There's a lot going into this bill. Again, as I said, there's 720 going into this. The bill itself is nearly 150 pages. You guys should have received a copy of the PDF. We have heard that they are not done drafting it. There are supposed to be a number of other amendments made and changes made to this final version from the people who are working on the bill, as well as there are amendments coming from people outside of the group of the super seven, as they have been called on the floor of the senators who drafted this bill. So as we got this earlier this afternoon and finally saw language, we had heard murmurs that this is going to be in it, that's going to be in it for about a week and a half now. We have not put together a legislative committee meeting to take any formal positions or discuss this or analyze this as a group. So at the time, for the time being, we're still looking and analyzing this. It is going to be on the floor tomorrow. The very, there are only two bills on the agenda tomorrow. One is a controversial bill dealing with abortion, that's first. And then the next bill would be this one. So we are likely to start debate on this before lunch or right after lunch, around 1:30. So I think we should probably put together a legislative committee meeting for tomorrow morning to talk about this bill further. That would be my recommendation for the time being. So those are the property tax bills. I think it'd be best if we pause now and take questions on that because I'm going to get into a ton of other stuff. Is that okay?
Yes, that's perfectly fine. I'll take the first question. Did you go over that the 370, once it gets to 375, the percentage increase of property evaluations, money that has to get put into that fund?
As we, as our valuations grow, the fund would also grow.
Is there a cap on that fund?
There is not.
Okay. All right, okay. Mrs. Gadding.
So it's my understanding from, and I was on a legislative call today with a different organization, that that will not have impact on TOSA, is that correct?
That is correct. TOSA is not directly mentioned in this bill. I do know that there's a senator that would like to actually get put into the bill that TOSA must be fully funded and certified language to that extent. I know that's being drafted, so I'm sure that that will be a part of the discussion tomorrow.
Right, and I did hear that during this call that there was, you know, they were working on drafting that language. So, I mean, as always, TOSA can be anything that it happens to be in that year. So we know that that's always a moving target, but we also know that property tax is significant and the drafters of this particular legislation are very powerful in the legislature and so I would guess that they have momentum behind them.
They've been working on trying to whip votes basically this entire time while also simultaneously drafting it and finishing formulating it. I will say, in terms of the forecast, as Mr. Pearlman mentioned earlier, they are looking at it as a little bit more rosy of a projection because this is being put together upon the assumption that the casino gambling petitions that are going to be on the ballot are going to pass. And so that we have, the forecast that we're working on might not be entirely accurate because we might have some gambling money. And as the petitions were drafted, as that ballot measure was drafted, there is a certain percentage of the money that is from the proceeds from the casino gambling that will have to go either directly into the property tax relief fund or into a property tax relief other fund, if you will. So they're projecting, using money from gambling to try and put this together. Thank you.
And with that, we, nobody knows if the gambling measure does pass, how much money we would actually bring in revenue. I mean, it's interesting. Do you have any other questions? I'm sorry.
Is there a law in the unicameral to legalize gambling?
No, it's the three ballot measures that we believe will be certified to be on the ballot in November. They're still going through the signatures, but it would be those three that would create a constitutional amendment to allow for, we need a constitutional amendment to allow for casino gambling.
Well, so you said this bill's 150 pages?
Yes.
I mean, I first got word of this around four o'clock tonight, so I guess it'll give me something to do after the meeting tonight, but you know, it might not, the bill might not include TOSA, but what are the odds that it does not impact TOSA?
As drafted, it will have a general fund impact. Of course, TOSA comes out of the general fund and state aid comes out of the general fund and is certified, but
So it will impact TOSA?
Anything that takes away from the general fund could then impact TOSA, if you will.
Right. So just for clarity, this bill will impact TOSA? Is that correct? I just think the public needs clarity on this.
It depends on what the legislature decides to do that year. Over the last 25 years, you know, we've thrown this out, senators have changed or decreased or changed the formula almost every year except for, I think it's two or three.
I guess that is my cause for concern because if something happens 25 times in a row and then we have lawmakers who are absolutely desperate to get something done because they haven't been getting much done in Lincoln this year, tell us as a school district that this isn't going to include TOSA, but you know, everyone knows it's going to impact you or impact, you know, the funding that schools get. I just, I'm really concerned about this, especially when like half of America is unemployed right now. You know, I remember in March, I'll never forget in March, you know, just a little aside for everyone, the pandemic was starting and they have an economic forecasting board and like everything had shut down. You remember that first, everything was crazy, everything shut down, like it was chaos. The Economic Forecasting Board in Nebraska like was projecting like, like these crazy strong revenues.
150 million, Mr. Pearlman.
Right, I couldn't wrap my head around that because I didn't know if they were watching the news that week or whatever, but, so I don't trust any numbers that come out of there, especially when 25 years in a row, they've been tinkering with the funding of public schools. So I just think, I just think it's crazy to be honest, but you know, I guess I'm just like a tree in the forest right now. Hopefully, maybe there'd be someone in Lincoln who's listening because this is, this is like scary stuff for funding a public education as far as I'm concerned, but that's all.
From what I've heard so far from a few senators who are just now looking at this for the first time, again, it just saw the light of day this afternoon. A lot of senators do share that concern in terms of how we do fund this, even including some members of the appropriations committee. They're, they're working on different amendments to potentially make sure that public education funding would be protected. But I think it'll be a big fight tomorrow, a big debate tomorrow. It has been made a speaker major proposal. It already has a number of different motions to indefinitely postpone it, bracket it, and recommit it to committee. So a lot, a large part of the discussion will be on those motions.
Thank you. I would echo Mr. Pearlman's concerns. Anytime they come to you and they, they tell you upfront, it's not going to affect TOSA, it's most likely going to affect TOSA. I don't understand when people say it only is going to affect the general fund, but not TOSA. It's this, when education's almost half, over half of your state budget, it's your general fund, which is TOSA. So it will be affected. And when OPS is the largest swinger in the room, we have to weigh in on it because I don't want our board or to strap future boards or our superintendent five, six years down the road to be having a conversation, or actually the next year, a conversation about that they realign TOSA to fit their needs because this bill was too heavy and they couldn't properly fund it. It becomes a problem for us. And not just a problem for us, but a problem for our citizens and future taxpayers of our state. And it creates a slippery slope. And knowing that some of our senators, no offense, that are in the Gang of Seven, some of them have been out against public schools and really hell-bent on lowering property taxes. And in the middle of a pandemic, you're trying to do an incentive package, lower people's property taxes- lower people's property taxes as well as support our med center. I mean, you gotta get the money from somewhere, and it's too much wishful thinking. And unfortunately, we can't act like that. And I, I really do believe, I wouldn't say believe, I really strongly encourage you all to contact your state senators, if you can, tomorrow, tonight, and reach out to them and tell them to stand up for not just public education, but the state of Nebraska. I, I don't believe this thing's going to crush under its own weight because there's some things in it that I think are going to push people to want to vote on it, in favor of it. So, the way I see it right now, I'm not in favor of it. I know that makes it harder for you, Blair, and I apologize, but you're amazing at what you do.
It's also, just so that you know, tomorrow is one of our last few days that we could advance something from general file and have it, have the appropriate amount of time to then advance to select file, lay over, advance to select file, and then advance on final reading and then be sent to the governor without the potential for coming back and, and voting on something to override if, if the governor chooses to veto something. So, we're, we're running out of daylight here. We will not be convening on Friday. So, we have Wednesday, Thursday this week, and then next week, we will be reconvening on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And Thursday will be the final day, adjourn signing day, so.
Thank you.
Okay. The next few issues I want to discuss are, are served around the Student Discipline Act and the Behavioral Training Cash Fund. Those would be LB 147 and LB 998. LB 147, you'll recall, is, is a carryover bill from Senator Grony. It's on page two of your matrix, and that would allow for teachers to authorize teachers or administrators, school employees to use necessary physical restraint or control to, to subdue a child, a student because of a behavioral issue, as well as remove them from the classroom. It provides a, a type of qualified immunity to teachers and school employees if they are using reasonable standards to do that. And LB 998 is the Behavioral Training Cash Fund. That would actually provide a, a specific amount on a per-school building basis as a reimbursement to the school and the school district to provide for all teachers to receive physical intervention and de-escalation training. LB 147 partners with LB 998. We debated LB 147 for three hours on general file in January, and then again, at the, the first, first week, we were back in session. And then Senator Grony was able to prove on a vote card that he had 33 votes to get it rescheduled. So, we debated it again last Thursday, and the, what Senator Grony intends to do is amend LB 998, which is on pages 18 and 19 of your matrix, to LB 147. Unfortunately, it failed in that manner. So, what we are currently dealing with is LB 920, which is on select file. LB 920 is the bill that, that would extend the sunset on and create a few new state lottery-funded cash funds and programs. So, the funding mechanism with, for the Behavioral Training Cash Fund already lives in and is written in the introduced version of LB 920. LB 920 did advance to select file, and just today, Senator Merman introduced an amendment to LB 920 that would amend LB 147 and LB 998 onto LB 920. So, they're kind of living together now on, on select file. It, we're not going to be debating it tomorrow, obviously, because the agenda is set for the day, but we could see it on select file potentially on Thursday. So, we don't have a position of opposition to 920, but we are opposed to, to LB 147. We are monitoring with research LB 9 and 8. The next group of bills that I want to review with you all is all the different bills that dealt with inappropriate teacher-student relationships and sexual assault between teacher and, and, on a student. You'll recall that there were a number of bills that were introduced in regards to these subject matters. The ones that I want to discuss today are LB 1048. That was Senator Quick's bill, that's on page 20 of your matrix. We were monitoring that with research. You'll recall that we worked on a bill with Senator Vargas, LB 1210, that dealt with a similar matter in terms of creating the actual felony and crime of sexual assault of a student on it, by a teacher. So, LB 1210, we worked on, tried to work on an amendment to LB 1048. Senator Lathrop, the chairman of the Judiciary Committee, brought together all the bills and used 1048 as the framework to put together an amendment onto a different bill because none of these bills were prioritized. Everything had to be, have a priority for it to get scheduled. So, we, Senator Lathrop repackaged 1048, and we have worked on some amendment language that we would like, we would have liked to see included in the final version. It ended up, the, the final version ended up being amended to LB 881, which is a judiciary bill that has nothing to do with the subject matter. And unfortunately, our changes, our suggestions were not, were not taken and used, uh, used in the amendment. LB 881 passed on final reading yesterday. I've spoken to a few different senators and a few of our education partners, and we think that potentially we'd like to revisit putting together some stronger protections for our students that would cover more scenarios of predatory behavior from school employees on students at school, in schools next session. So, we'd like to potentially revisit this in January. The other bill that was the education and policy side of this, of these issues was LB 1080 from Senator Lathrop. That was an education committee bill. That also passed on final reading. That is on page 21 of your matrix. The next issue was actually on the floor today. It's LB 1089, the FAFSA completion as a graduation requirement bill. It's on page 21 of your matrix. We have a position of monitor and research. We had some concerns that we expressed to Senator Vargas about protections for all of our OPS students, including those who may be undocumented. This bill would require that all students fill out the FAFSA or either certify that they've filled it out or fill out a, an opt-out waiver, and it would be an informed opt-out waiver. Senator Vargas was, worked on a committee amendment, but didn't, the, the committee amendment itself did not make all the changes that we would like to see. We've, we've expressed our concerns to Senator Vargas and given him some language that we would like to see him include on the bill, in the bill on select file. We want to ensure that all students are treated equitably and all families' privacy is maintained when the recommendation is being made to a student as to whether they should complete the FAFSA or complete the opt-out waiver. And we want to make sure that all their data and student records would be privately maintained as private, protected records. So, that's what's happening on 1089. The next bill that I want to briefly overview is 1131, which is on pages 22 and 23 of your matrix. It's the NDE Education Committee Cleanup Bill, which makes a number of changes, including that it updates language in regards to the third grade reading proficiency testing and prescribed interventions, which was a bill, which was passed, or statutes, which was passed in a bill a few years back that was worked on by Senators Lenihan and Panzik-Brooks. In the bill, a "may" was switched to a "shall", which restricts the district's flexibility in offering reading interventions to students. We've talked to both of those senators about the necessity of amending that section on select file to remove the "shall" in a section, in the reading interventions statutes. That bill is on select file. We are just a position to monitor with research. Even though it's, it's a massive bill, over 100 pages, that's the only tweak we want to see. It has not been scheduled for debate this entire time. I think Senator Grony's been focused on his other education bills, 147 and 998. So, again, that's hanging out on select. And then a new issue that's not on your matrix that we discussed in our legislative committee was an amendment to LB 1167, which was a bill on open media, the Open Meetings Act. And then AM 3104 was introduced by Senator Brewer, the chairman of the Government and Military Affairs and Veteran Affairs Committee. It would have allowed for video conference board meetings throughout the pandemic. We worked with other political subdivisions to put together the amendment. There was a sunset included, the, would, that would allow us to meet through video conference until July of 2021. This, this special provision would end then. The hearing was set for government committee for July 27th at 8:00 a.m., but Friday afternoon, we heard that Chairman Brewer had pulled the amendment and had canceled the hearing. So, there will be no video conference meetings throughout the pandemic as, as of now. And then just the general list of other bills that we've been watching. Page nine of your matrix, LB 515, Senator Vargas's student discipline bill from last year that was, would have been costly to the district. We spoke with Senator Vargas when it was on the floor, but it had no priority. It's on select file, and we had a position of opposition to it, but it won't be scheduled, so it, it's dead for the year. LB 751 was Senator Blood's Mental Health Exception for Student Attendance Plans Bill. That passed on final reading yesterday. That's on page 16 of your matrix. Page 17 is LB 965, which would establish the English Language Proficiency Assessment for the Deaf or Hard of Hearing, which supported that bill, and it passed on final reading. Or, excuse me, placed on final reading. LB 1186, page 25, is a bill that would provide injury leave for school employees who are injured on a job as a result of a student-involved incident. That passed yesterday on final reading, and there were no additional amendments. We had heard that there might be, but there were no changes to that bill. LB 1202, on page 25, is the Opportunity Scholarships Tax Credit Bill from Senator Lenihan. That, it has not made it out of the Revenue Committee. I believe it, it's probably because there's a fiscal note on it, and it would be a little bit costly this year. And LB 1218, this is a kind of obscure bill for us. It was the Historically Underutilized Businesses Program Act that we are monitoring. It's on page 28 of your matrix. The bill was placed on general file today with a white copy amendment. That was a bill from Senator Wayne. He swapped out this bill and, and that program for his other bill. LB 1179, the Imagine Small Business and Urban Revitalization Act, which would provide tax incentives to small businesses in blighted areas for increasing their employees and, and investing in the community a certain amount for the size of the business, so. Those are all the bills that I have to review with you all today. The only recommendation that we made as a legislative committee or that came out of the legislative committee for the board to take a position on was opposition to AM 3079, the School Property Tax Stabilization Act that would have provided foundation aid to schools outside of the TOSA formula.
Alrighty. Thank you. Mrs. Godding.
Larry, I have just a couple of questions for you. I know you're going pretty fast, and it's hard to talk sometimes with these masks on.
Yes.
So, on 1131, did the "shall" get removed?
No, because we, it has not seen the floor yet.
But it could, we're hoping it does.
Yes.
Okay, and on 1089, I know one of my concerns was privacy. I know when we had the legislative call, you said that any parent can opt out of that if they want to. There's no question.
No reason listed.
Is that something that didn't happen? I know you just said Senator Vargas didn't make some of the changes.
We just wanted it to be more explicit, so one of the changes that we suggested to, to Senator Vargas and his staff was that the documents be made student records so that they would have protection under FERPA for those students who do fill out the waiver, so we can protect whatever their status may be or whatever their rationale for not, for opting out would be from any, you know, any public, you know, anything.
Right, but any parent who decides, I don't want my child to fill out the FAFSA, doesn't have to.
Yes.
And there's no, anything they have to do? Just check the waiver box?
There's no, there's no reason listed.
Okay, perfect.
Any other questions? Alrighty. Well, thank you so much for your hard work and dedication to the legislature. We'll have a legislative meeting tomorrow, I believe.
Yes. Do you want to take up the AM?
Yeah, that is, take a position on that.
Yeah, it's on, I think it's on page 28.
Oppose AM 3079. So, I will entertain a motion to approve the updated matrix, I-1A, which is the, only change on that is the opposition of AM 3079. And once I get to the bottom of it, well, you've already seen it.
What page is that on, the matrix?
28 and 29.
28, and it's the School Property Tax Stabilization Act.
So, it's just being removed?
Say it again.
So, it's just being removed?
No, we're, I'm entertaining a motion to approve the opposition that the legislative committee. So, we're taking an action on this. Anybody want to?
So moved.
Oh, sorry. I did not pay attention. I'm sorry, Mr. Pearlman. So moved. Mr. Pearl, first, this is motion by Mr. Pearlman, second by Ms. Ryan. Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Godding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey. Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snike.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Nana. Motion carries. Thank you, Blair. Moving on to item I-1B, New Grant Awards. I believe this was an item that was polled. Mrs. Godding.
Thank you. I pulled this item simply because at the very bottom of the grants, the last one listed is the CARES Act, and the amount listed is $23,207,255. But I would just like Mr. Roberts to come up and share what the actual amount is that the district will have for utilization, just for transparency purposes and to clarify to the public that we don't get sometimes everything that comes our way.
Yes, that's a good point, Mrs. Godding, and, and thank you for asking the question. Under the allocation, under the ESSRS Fund within the CARES Act, the district does receive gross amount of $23,207, $23.2 million. We are required to share proportionally with the non-public districts within our area, and we will be allocating, based on the state formula, $3.6 million to the 34 non-public districts within the area. So, we will retain a net amount of about $19.6 million for district use.
Thank you. I just think that's important that when we think about the 54,000 iPads that we approved, it was significantly more than that, including the cost of the internet connectivity. And I think sometimes people think, oh, we got the money from CARES to cover all that. And we did get some, but I think our levy's still at one cent. What do we draw to? A little over $2 million per one cent?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand the question.
How, how much is a one, one cent of our levy from a tax perspective? What do we get?
Um, well, let's see, one cent.
I think it's a little more than $2 million.
Yeah, it's like $2.36 million in total.
So, in a, in a sense, this is a cent and a half.
Correct.
If you think about it that way, and so I just want to...
For the non-publics, you're correct.
Right. So, I just want to make sure that from a transparency standpoint, we share that with the public so they understand where we're at as well.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is an action item, so I will entertain a motion to approve item I-1B.
It's so moved.
This is a motion by Dr. Holman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any other discussion? Say none. Roll call, please. Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snike.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
Nana. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to information item. Our first item is the Preparing for Irresponsible Return to School. This is our Transportation School Plans in Early Childhood. And I will... Say it again? And we're going to actually have Dr. Crowe go first.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me here. As our district prioritizes the health and safety of students and staff, we do agree with experts that in-person instruction benefits students both academically and socio-emotionally. Simultaneously, district leaders, we take our responsibility of students and staff's safety most seriously. Knowing that community strategies to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 may involve individual or coordinated school closures and a move to remote learning, or even a district transition to remote learning in the event of significant community spread, Omaha Public Schools will follow a three-phased approach to guide decision-making regarding closures. The first phase is our investigation. All investigations will follow Omaha Public Schools COVID-19 contact tracing procedures, which ensure our ability to communicate with families and staff who are in direct contact with individuals found to have positive contact with COVID-19. Our public health partners, such as Douglas County Health and UNMC, will work collaboratively with the district through this process. Communication, upon identification of positive cases in our school or program, and in consultation with public health partners, notification will be provided to families. Mitigation of risk to families is our final phase. And depending on several factors, including, but not limited to, number of students and/or staff with a positive test, number of sites affected, percentage of staff on leave or ordered to quarantine, transportation availability, Douglas County Health risk assessments, guidance from local health officials, and the Nebraska Department of Education color-coded scale rating, Omaha Public Schools will utilize deep cleaning and sanitization procedures to ensure the safest and most efficient return to in-person instruction. In the event of a school closure, if it's determined necessary, these following maximum responses will be used with the option to extend that time period for remote learning based on our investigation findings and level of exposure, such as use of face covering, social distancing, sanitization, things like that. So, here you can see if there is one student and/or staff member at a single site, the school or program may remote learn for up to a day. If there are two or four students and/or staff members at a single site, schools or programs may remote learn for up to three days. Five or more students or staff members at a site, schools or programs may remote learn for up to 14 days. And if there are five or more students and/or staff members at 10% of our sites, or as determined necessary by district administration, the district may remote learn until further notice.
Are there any questions from board members?
I have a question. So, it says "may" return, so "may" doesn't necessarily mean "will." So, when would it be remote learning then?
Sure. So, this is the maximum response. We placed "may" in there just so that everyone understands that there are nuanced approaches to this. So, if, for instance, some, a student is caught, not caught, if a student is discovered to be positively, to have COVID positivity, then if they're outside the school, if they're in a face mask, if no contact was made, then we don't have to go all the way up to closing the school for, for a day? So, the "may" is just a worst-case scenario for that particular response.
Thank you. And then my other question is, when a child is found to be positive, then how are you going to be, I guess, discreet to not, you know, cause panic with other families?
Sure. So, typically, they're going to be removed from the situation. And then, following the Omaha Public Schools contact tracing procedures, which I don't believe was included in, okay, so, there, we do have procedures, and maybe I'll let Mr. Mas.
I can go over it. I know them by heart.
Okay.
So, we are, we use, it's a box method that the Douglas County Health Department uses. So, they look at, they're, they're gonna look and determine whether or not the level of facial coverings that have been used in the classroom, and then determine how far out of the box that they need to go. So, knowing where the child sits, the children, children could be that, that next to him, and, and the teacher would be the people that might be contacted. If it's, the child was not wearing a facial covering for some part of the time, then the box extends. And what we do is we share that information with our liaison with the, at Douglas County Health, and they help us make a determination. Earlier today, I sent you a, a positive case, and that box extended out to 17 people, right? So, that is the way, 17 young people, you know, on a sports team. So, that is the way that, that, that's the way the box method works. And what they, what we, what they try to do is if they're, if students don't have to be quarantined, then, you know, they, they will say that. And if they get additional information, then the box may contract, or the box can expand. But we work with them. One of the things we also did, Ms. Snipe, is that because we're concerned about the bandwidth of one, and we had kind of had our health director kind of in charge of this during the summertime, when we have very much, not nearly as much staff, and most of our staff was still working remote until July 27. And what they, what they did was, what we did was, we added, we have a couple of our folks who work in our health division, their school nurses or health aides, who cannot also return. So, we added them to that team to make sure that we have a larger team of people to help contact trace. Human resources is involved if it's a staff member, and then with the children, we use, we will use the, the school administration to make sure that the notification is made. The public health department has a pretty, has a standard way of notifying, but we will be required to support contact tracing. School, obviously, the teacher would know who's sitting next to the children and would need to know that throughout the school day. Did that answer your question? Because I don't see, I'm looking at your body language, although I can't see.
It does.
So, does that, did I answer your question?
It does. And I guess my only other question I have, because I do realize that there hasn't been a lot of guidance and direction. So, when it comes to the case tracing, was that developed like with the county or the state?
It's the county. The county health department is our partner.
Thank you.
And I would say, in addition to the county health department being our partner, UNMC has really been a wonderful partner to us. We had a call last week. Dr. Holman was on that call. They're going to come in next week and do some assessments of our sites. They're going to assess four sites for us that we, that we selected. The schools don't know. We are, it won't be a visit that, but based on that, to give us some feedback on the protocols that we have put in place. They have seen all of our initial protocols and the things that we have put into place, but in this case, they'll be able to see it with actual, with, with our children, obviously, in school.
Thank you.
Is that helpful? Dr. Holman, did you wanna add anything?
I don't think so.
Okay, sure.
So, then how does that work when there's the same household?
Great question, and something we certainly anticipate and have already kind of dealt with that. So, we will obviously notify the children, all the people in the household. And typically, it's the other, other way. The, the household notifies us of a, of a child that is, has been positive. And then we would kind of do the same thing. The health department would let us know, do which children need to be quarantined, and those children would be quarantined. It's quite an extensive process. And if you figure, think about, we have many families. One of our speakers tonight has, has four children and, I think, four schools. And that is, that literally could have that kind of impact. So, it's gonna be something.